Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is the Board of Selectmen meeting, March 21st. We will have the Finance Committee coming in another 45 minutes or so. We will continue working on the budget process and the warrants as we prepare for town meeting. So the meeting's been called to order. Tonight, we're actually in the William-Belden Training Room, which will help us in our -- as we go through the budget later, we'll be using some of the audiovisual devices and computer screens, so the background may look a little different to you this evening. Is there anything under announcements, Ed or Cindy?
Just one briefly. I just can announce that Pat Carnaval from MEMA, who we've worked with over many years, has just been named by the governor as the special liaison to the five counties in Western Mass. So we'll be working closely with him, as we have in the past, in other capacities. He's been very helpful to Hatfield in a lot of ways. When we did the new partnership in April of this past year with the food bank, he came out when we spread that to the other communities through emergency management in Hampshire County, Franklin County, and even further east. So he'll be taking -- represent Mr. Nappick's place as of next week.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Marlene, did you have anything under announcements? Okay, I had one thing that I'd like to announce. This is on behalf of the schools, actually. So the high school is going to be having some presentations next week at Smith Academy, and they're calling them the "Smith Sessions," an evening dedicated to keeping our school community informed. And I'll just paraphrase pretty much what the principal and what the -- has written and what the concept is. So Hatfield Guardians of School-Aged Children are invited to Smith Sessions Community Evening. The event is intended to provide meaningful information to parents and guardians with school-aged children. The first hour will include a brief overview from each panelist, followed by breakout workshops. So I say all that, and I will give you the -- if you have any questions, you can call the school at 247-5641. But the different sessions that will be available that evening will be cyber sensibility, the Common Application and the Path to College, When Worrying Takes Over, Managing Anxiety in Teens, Addiction Services, Trends in Teen E-cigarette and Marijuana Use. And those would be the various sessions that they'll be having. So the first part is an overview by each of the speakers, and then it's breakout groups with the parents who -- and guardians who would be interested in learning more about those particular topics. So that's next Thursday, the 29th of March. Starts at 6:00, but they need a head count because there's going to be some food and refreshments provided. So if you are planning on attending, you can go onto the Hatfield PS, for public school, hatfieldps.net, and there's a sign-up form there. Or, as I mentioned, you can call the school at 247-5641. But you need to do that by Tuesday at 2:00, by Tuesday, the 27th, at 2:00 p.m., if you're interested, so they can get the head count. You don't pick the session you're going to attend, of course, until you actually get the overview from the various speakers. All right. So thank you for that. So there's no other announcements. So is there anybody here for public forum this evening?
I guess I'll come on. I was going to ask under announcements.
Oh, yeah, I don't -- I don't know.
I just needed to announce something with the 350.
Sure, yeah.
That the local contest, we will be extending it. We're going to have a meeting next week, but we'll be extending it by about two weeks because of a communication gap here. It was misinformed at the school and stuff, so we have to extend it. So we'll do that at our meeting, but I just want everybody to know that it's going to be extended for another two weeks. Really, we'll hold on to the ones that have been submitted, and when they all come in, we'll take it from there.
Okay. And Ed, just to clarify, and if anybody wants any information about it, they can still go to the website.
They have us on the website.
Yep.
Anyone else on the committee.
Okay, great.
They can stop in my office.
Or you can go stop into the Town Clerk's office as well. All right, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else here for public forum? Okay, thank you. All right, we have some minutes from February 21st that need to be approved.
Can I move that the minutes from February 21st, 2018, be approved?
Is there a second? I'll second it. So a motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions on the --
Yes, I just want to make a point on the minutes. I do feel that we did hire the low bid for the cleaning contract because the one bidder was disqualified, so I just want to make that comment, that's all.
Well, does that change anything about the minutes?
Well, it's not mentioned in there.
Oh.
It's mentioned that you felt.
Right.
That we didn't hire the low bidder, which we did, as far as I'm concerned, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, all right. So are you looking to amend the minutes to add that, or you just wanted to make that comment in public?
Well, I think that should be in the minutes. I'm not sure. I'll have to check and see if I made that comment or not. But if I didn't, I guess I can't amend them.
Do you want to table these? Or are you good accepting them the way they are?
No, I'll just let it slide.
All right.
I mean, I just -- I think there's a difference of opinion on that one point in the minutes as far as the warding of the contract, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, that's all.
So a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of Payroll and AP Warrants. So we've got vouchers, 1033 and 1034. Board of Selectmen does at their bi-week, bi-monthly, or monthly meetings approve the -- make an official approval of those warrants that have come out. So warrant 1033 for the town of Hatfield in the sum of $69,359.10. And voucher 1034 from the town of Hatfield funds in this amount, in the sum of $63,999.537. I'll make a motion to approve both those vouchers. Is there a second?
Actually, is there any seconded and discussion?
Okay. That's all right. So a motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I was hoping you could explain them more than they're explained right here.
Well, as far as the backup info -- I don't have the backup information that goes with them either, Cindy.
Okay.
I mean, was there a question about a --
Because they're usually --
Yeah, usually we get the whole --
No, there's usually all the backup information, so I'm concerned about voting on everything that doesn't have everything with it, that's all. You know, if I can see what it entails.
My understanding is these have been reviewed and signed, so you're voting them. Both of them are AP warrants, I believe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I may --
What's that?
If I may, Derek included another one that he just finished.
We only have these in the packet, though.
Right.
Those were the only ones in the packet, yes.
Right. So these look like accounts payable warrants. They have been reviewed and signed.
Right. So the purpose of approving these at a Board of Selectmen meeting is we have already reviewed these individually and signed them previous, you know, when we go into the treasurer's office and the collector's office.
State law requires the Board of Selectmen.
Right, so we make it official at a vote at a public meeting, Cindy, is what it is.
Right.
So if you -- because the voucher date on one of these is the 18th, and the other is the 18th.
Yeah, I see that, but I didn't know what was attached to them. That's why I was just questioning. I wanted to know when I'm voting.
All the backup is in the folders when you reviewed them? Is that what you're looking for, all the backups?
Right, I didn't know what these belonged to.
These look new. These look like we haven't seen them before.
They're not attached to anything usually, everything's, you know, when it breaks it down.
Right.
And gives us the list of 10 things we're voting on.
They're not a signed copy.
I feel like I'm --
We'll get a some -- why don't we, going forward, why don't we get a summation of, you know, you guys, this is the official one that you signed last week or something like, because we can't, you know, we sign so many, we can't remember what every single thing is.
I mean, we do have the one that's already signed, a photocopy.
Or attached it, that's a good idea.
And we know that we signed it, right?
That's a good idea.
You know, just get the one that we've all signed so we can approve it a second time.
Good idea. So a motion has been made and seconded on these particular ones. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Do you have any other questions? All right, so all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I like that idea, Ed. Okay, the next posted business had been a request for a one-day liquor license, but all the paperwork and the person that was looking to do so has not finalized the application, so we're just going to skip over that. And I don't even know what the timeframe was, but if it's something for the future and everything comes in, we'll vote at it in our next meeting, okay? Excuse me. Okay, Marlene, topic number six.
The next item is just a summary of a meeting that Kyle Scott, building inspector, and DPW director, Phil Genovese, and I had with Joy Duperault from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. She's specifically with the Flood Hazard Management Program, and she had reviewed -- she -- this was a scheduled field visit. She had requested to meet with the three of us, including a representative from the Conservation Commission. Paul Sassy wasn't able to make that. So this just outlines information that's already on record with the state, and also I had highlighted, maybe highlighted in your copies, of recommendations that the town should be making, or recommendations to take. So for future reference, these will be topic discussions for future meetings.
Yep.
You know, most of it really refers to amending our zoning bylaws and making changes. So actually, I've asked Phil and Kyle, we need to follow up and respond to this, and I've also asked if a representative from the Conservation Commission and Planning Board could sit down and meet with us to go over these, and then I'll report back.
Okay, I think that would make sense, did all the players.
But I just wanted to make the board aware that, you know, Ms. Duperault did come out and did a site visit, and they do this every few years. I think her notes state the last time somebody was out here.
Okay.
Was the purpose because we haven't changed the bylaws?
2009.
Or was it just a regular visit?
It's a regular scheduled visit. They are required to do this.
Yeah, it says the last time they were here was 2009.
2009.
But, and we hadn't, not yet changed the bylaws.
Right, geez.
Nine years.
That's a reminder that we need to do that. So I will follow up once we have that meeting. I haven't heard back from anybody yet. I just asked if they could let me know some dates that work for everybody.
So there's no action on this now?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you.
She's waiting for us to respond.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks, Marlene. Did you have any questions on that, Ed?
No, I just, I -- needs a lot of discussion on this, because it does affect the town. It does affect housing, future housing. It affects a lot of things, so we need more information.
Right, and that should be with the Board of Selectmen. I'd just like input from the Planning Board and Conservation, and then we'll report back to you at once we've had that meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. You all set with that one, Cindy?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. All right. The next topic, near and dear to all of our hearts, town meeting warrant, various articles that will be on or may be on or expected to be on.
It's a draft.
Yep.
When is our actual last day to modify or adjust or change any of these?
I don't, you know, I should have the date.
I'm looking over your shoulder to --
I just looked at the date when this needs to be signed, and it's in April.
Yeah, it is in April. Is it 21 or 14?
The date escapes me, but it's --
Might be 14, but --
I think the annual is seven days.
Oh, we have that much time? Okay.
Well, that's when it has to be posted.
Right.
Yeah.
So done signing it.
Yep.
Right. And I --
Let's shoot for mid-April, just.
And I'm sorry, I should have that date in my head, and I just, like I said, I just looked at it the other day to remind me, and it's on the calendar.
Well, we have plenty of meetings between now and then.
The conference is down to two weeks because people are --
Yes, right.
-- calling for it for that.
You have a copy of the draft town meeting warrant and also a draft copy of the proposed ballot question.
Yep.
To have the elected town treasurer and town collector become an appointed town treasurer/collector. I did reach out to the Department of Revenue because there was some thoughts, discussions I've had with some members about two separate questions, and the statute, you know, that statute provides an example or a sample of the ballot question, and so this is from the statute. I reached out to the Department of Revenue and asked them if we could have two separate questions. I received a reply that they will have their legal department look at it, but I have not received a response.
Okay. So I'll just repeat the question so the townspeople can hear it and the people here in the audience. So question one, shall the town vote to have its elected town treasurer and town collector become an appointed town treasurer slash collector of the town of Hatfield? So that will be a ballot question. We're just going to see if it needs any tweaking from a regulatory or from a legal perspective, and then it'll just, that'll be a ballot question of a yea or a nay, yes or a no. So how did my colleagues and Marlene wish to move forward on these drafts? I mean, so the first few are kind of the ones we always do, right? We'll take any money people are willing to give us. We're still working on the budget, so I don't know, some of these, as far as, you know, the amounts, we don't really quite have yet, right? So is this something you'd rather wait till the, for us to sort of go over, or would you rather wait till the Finance Committee's here with us if we have time during the budget conversation? I don't know.
I mean, this is sort of like a meeting in itself to go through the articles.
It is, yeah.
So, but we got to make sure we do it before we have --
Oh, yeah, yeah. Excuse me, right. I think what this does, Ed, or at least for me in the past as a selectman, you know, gives us an idea of, you know, what's out there, what other committees, like the Planning Committee or, you know, zoning, whoever, are bringing forward so that we have an idea of what's going to be on the, what their people are looking to have on the warrant, and then that's how we can have the conversations regarding the various pieces of it.
About half of it is regarding marijuana, so it's actually much shorter than it looks.
Yeah. And there is a meeting next week, by the way, of the, on the, or in two weeks, on April 4th.
April 4th, yeah.
On April 4th regarding these bylaws with the Planning Committee, so if anybody's interested on that one. So, yeah, you're right, Cindy. It's only four pages of, at this point, of articles, which, and they're not numbered yet. There's no true specifics for most of them, so.
Article two, I would recommend that we either remove it and table it, just defer it to a later town meeting. That is money that the Community Preservation Committee would like to recoup. There was an accounting error several years ago, and we attempted to give that back to them last year.
Right.
We just didn't have the available funds. So again, that article's still there. I can take it off and just put it on a warrant, a future town meeting warrant.
Well, right, so, and yes, because we do owe CPA that, you know, those funds. So why don't we wait? I mean, I don't disagree with you, but why don't we wait till we go through these and know what we're doing once we go through the various aspects of the budget? If that's okay with you? I mean, we're not going to make any final decisions tonight anyways, so.
Correct. Well, I just, you know.
Unless you just want to --
I was prepared to have, whatever the board would like to do. I didn't know if you wanted to go through and just have a brief discussion on each article.
We can do it that way, too. I'm just, I'm just, well, I know we're a little behind on our, from a timeframe, but we, you know, we can do it however you want to do it.
Future meeting.
You sure?
Yeah.
Or we can just keep going in order, and if, you know.
I mean, through a page or two.
If we don't get to it before we meet with the Finance Committee, we can do it at the end, again, you know.
Could do that, too.
All right, yeah. All right, let's go through, sure.
I know you just received it, so I don't know if you have questions about some of the articles.
Would it make sense, Mr. Cahill?
To wait till the Finance Committee is here before you talk about any articles that might have some financial implication? Like the CTC reimbursement?
And we do normally do that.
Yeah.
We do discuss those with the --
Well, just so we're not saying it twice. I mean, it might be the way to go, so, yeah, I don't disagree. So, Marlene, if you're amendable to that, why don't we just, if we're going to go through these after we go through the budget, we can go through it with the Finance Committee if there, if time. Because until we really have financial numbers, we're not going to know where, who, what, when, and where, so, okay. Are you okay with that, Cindy and Ed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Marlene. Thanks for putting these together to what we have at this point anyways.
And if, well, for later on, too, or when we discuss it, if there's something you think of that I overlooked, didn't include, just remind me, and I'll add it.
I have an idea on one, but we can talk about that later. All right, thank you. Town Hall renovations, Phase Two update. There was a meeting yesterday, I believe, with the town hall employees. Some select board members were there, as well as the architect themselves, so I don't know if you want to do an overview of --
Well, they, pursuant to their contract, they presented construction drawings, 80% of the construction phase. There was, and I think everybody should have received an outline of the discussion. I'm not sure if you received that, Brian. But anyway, we, right.
Thank you.
There were questions from departments. I had provided a list of questions to the architects in advance of the meeting, and much of the discussion was about, you know, when construction would be starting. They're looking at starting by July 1st, correct, Phil? Yes. And prior to that, what we need to do to prepare. So it has become evident that the fire protection is going to be an involved project for each individual office and will require some items to be moved out of the offices. We need to have a discussion about possibly renting storage containers. I understand that those, in the summertime, those get very warm inside. I did not know that. So, and then some things, like filing cabinets, we could just cover with plastic, but there will be items that need to be moved out of the offices. We're working out plans for relocating the Building Inspector, Board of Health, and Council on Aging, and I will have a follow-up discussion with the board at our next meeting regarding an agreement with Our Lady of the Grace Church for the Council on Aging to use space over there. Just working out some details and just want to make sure that I have all the information before I speak to it.
Okay.
So things are moving along. July will be here before we realize it. The architects had asked to have another meeting with Phil, myself, and all three of the selectmen, or one member, just to, you know, sort of iron out some fine-tuned things, items that need to be, we need to give them some direction.
All right.
So I think, you know, it's moving forward. We are a couple of weeks behind schedule, but the architect assures me that that is not an issue.
When we were there, you talked about the storage containers. My understanding was that they would be providing them?
Well, there was a discussion about that, writing that up into the specifications, as well as the temporary ramp. That is something that will be covered by the contractor and written into the specifications.
Right. I thought the meeting was really productive, but my, what I thought was definitely missing is I thought someone, it would have been nice if someone from the contract, the general contracting company would have been there.
We haven't put that out to bid yet.
You haven't?
Oh, no, that hasn't been, construction has not been put out to bid.
Because this was my first meeting with the architects and all, and, but I really think that would add a lot to it if it does go out to bid at one of these meetings.
Well, we will.
It would be really helpful because there was a lot of questions that the architects couldn't answer because they don't know the answer.
Right, that's in the architect's contract to have that meeting. This was just the 80% of the construction drawings from the architects. So we're not to that point, but we will be in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Ed, did you have any questions or comments?
No, it was a good, productive meeting, and once they get the general contractor on board, then we can do that follow-up with them, and I --
We'll need to identify some space out here for equipment and, you know, for storage containers if we do rent one or two.
And I think the COA is aware that it's getting close to the deadline, so they have to pick a spot. And at the meeting, they weren't sure exactly, but now they sort of know that they're going to have to get everything out and go into a container and find a spot, so. I'm hoping that maybe the next meeting you have with an update on this, the COA may have determined where they're going.
I think we'll definitely know that.
Okay.
In the next meeting. I had a conversation this, earlier today with the COA director, and her goal is to be prepared to be out of the basement by June.
Perfect.
So, and they've already started packing up items, books, and dishes.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Marlene, or you guys, has the architect provided an updated cost estimate?
Tomorrow, he's supposed to, or, he's supposed to meet with the estimator this week.
This week, they were just waiting on that.
I think today or tomorrow, and get a updated estimate of where we're at.
So we'll have that before town meeting in case, just in case, just in case. And the other thing is, you mentioned the schedule that you anticipated that breaking ground basically in Phase Two would begin in July.
July 1st.
So when will, when will bids be sunset? When is that scheduled to happen?
At the end of June, like, and they were saying that right now, 8% of the bids right now, or the plan was like 1.7, and then break down, the estimated cost.
So.
So, but bids are going to go out in June, possible?
No, it should be earlier than that. It should be earlier than that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, I expect to have another meeting with them next week, so we just have some, like I said, some more details to work out.
The meeting yesterday was to try to get all the folks, you know, impacted, directly impacted, who are at Town Hall, to give them an overview and an estimate of timeframes.
And also, yesterday's meeting was to sit down if you had specific concerns, and they could write it into the bid, that, you know, if they're going to jackhammer this, it's done at a certain time, or that kind of stuff, so.
There will be lots of sheets of plastic up, you know, throughout the building. We anticipate there will be noise, dust.
And we'll survive. We'll get through this.
Don't have a choice?
Plus, the only interesting thing is that they have a coordination of our supplies.
Oh, for the, for running the electrical work, yeah.
And they have to work together on that. So they are working together.
Yes, it's for the elevator, correct. Is that for the elevator or the --
For the electrical.
Yeah, for the electric service. They said, well, if we're going to dig one trench through, and others, we're going to do for this conduit, and the same thing with the water line coming through to the pump, so.
Thank you. Anything else on that, Ed?
No, that's, so we're moving forward, and as they hire the contractors, then we'll have more information, I guess.
Yep, okay. Cindy, anything else on that?
No, I'm just hoping 10% is enough on the overrun costs, because most of them are going to 15% now that I've seen, so don't want any surprises.
Okay. Let's hope.
That's usually contingencies, 8% to 10%.
And we did include 10% contingency when we voted this project in 2016.
The other thing I'm understanding is that the generator was removed.
Correct, correct.
From the project.
Right.
To run the fire pump.
Yep, it's not necessary.
Not right, it's, it's correct.
Okay. More to follow. Thank you.[1769.12] Thanks, Marlene. Excuse me. Under, we're into our continued old business. So we, we've been doing an ongoing revision of the HR policy, the town's HR policy. We've been taking it section by section and making changes or adds, deletions, whatever, whatever seemed appropriate, just to keep it all current and up to date. So, right now, what we're going to be reviewing is the hiring procedure, which is, for those of you who are wondering, it's Section 8 of the HR policy for the town of Hatfield. But it has to do with the hiring procedures for employing, for employment. So what we've been doing, in essence, is we take the existing verbiage and then, bless you, and then we work with Marlene to see if anything needs to be inserted there. Whether it's because it's time for an update or if maybe the legality of something has changed to make sure we're following all the rules, regulations and procedures, so. Did you want to, at this point, Marlene, take it over? Do you want me? I mean, there's not a ton of potential changes. Some of it, a lot of it has to do with queries and background checks and things which are very important, obviously. Some application process changes and screening interviews, so.
The recommended, you know, changes or edits are in red.
Yes, thank you. It certainly makes it easier to find.
Well, 8.4, what were your thoughts on 8.4, Marlene?
Well, that is a requirement or, you know.
So 8.4 has to do with medical exams?
Right.
I just.
It's a pre-employment condition?
No, no, on your highlighted comment, you.
So I don't know that anybody is following through and doing that. There isn't anybody that track, keeps track of that and keeps a record of it that I'm aware of.
Well, for CDL licensing, there are certain tests that you keep track of? That are required, right? Mandated, so.
But all pre-employment, though. Pre-employment, so our department heads, I, does the treasurer have a copy of all those certifications from the physician for pre-employment? So the treasurer's office should get a, somebody should get a copy of it and have it on record. Prior to hire.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we just need to have the verification, yeah, that's all. So why don't we just close the gap on that and see, you know, what the, because it's always been part of the process to have, to have the medical exam. It's just a matter of, you know, is somebody actually scheduling employment or getting the paperwork from the physician?
We just don't have confirmation that it's been done.
Right, okay. One of the questions I had was on the application process, which is 8.2. So, basically, it talks about the application process. So this would be an application for employment. Written application for employment will be submitted to the appropriate elected board, department head or Board of Selectmen. The board may mandate the format and context of the application form. That's how it sits now. So the, the potential change was, which is defined in the Town Administrator roles right now, says that the Town Administrator will oversee and handle town departments with the hiring process, form, search committee if necessary, advertise positions, assist with the interviews, makes recommendations for filling the department board or committee vacancy. So, the only question I had on that was pretty much the first sentence where it says oversees and handles town departments. I think it was, for me, I think it should be assists the town departments with the hiring process, meaning it would still be up to the fire chief or the police chief or the DPW Director to bring forward the candidate that they'd like to hire. And they certainly can do that with the assistance of Marlene during a search committee or scheduling interviews or whatever the process may be. Rather than putting that on, you know, the Town Administrator to make those hirings. Because really, I think it should be the department head if they're filling positions in their own department.
Yes, I sort of tend to agree with that because I don't expect you to do all that. I mean, if they need assistance, then they can come in and see the Town Administrator for help. But for the most part, your departments are hiring.
That should be part of what a department head does.
Right, yeah, so.
Hey, Aunt Chris, shall I call you, please? Okay, go ahead, Cindy.
With the overseas, now, I took that to mean the process, not the actual hiring. Like, so there's like one central warehouse or whatever for all the paperwork and final paperwork to go and then be moved if somebody gets hired to the treasurer's. Because I, what it made me think of is the finance, finance board's recommendations about having the Town Administrator kind of overseeing the Town Hall as it is. So I almost think that if we're working those, this issue and that issue, I think they should kind of come in conjunction with each other. So I think they'd be contradictory if we didn't, is what I guess I'm saying. You know, because we're talking about having the Town Administrator oversee employees in the Town Hall specifically. But I think it means oversees the process, not exactly who gets hired, maybe?
Oh, okay.
That's how I read it anyway. But I don't know, so what was the context in which it was written? I just thought that, so everything is done the same, you know, for each department or whatever? But they'd all have the same guidelines? That's what I thought it meant.
Right, and I can see where you would get that. So part of what I got, Cindy, was that second last sentence where it says makes the recommendations for filling department board and committee vacancies. So, you know, I don't know if that recommendation is on behalf of a department head or, or does it all depend on what the vacancy is we're trying to fill?
It would be on behalf of the department head. Should be. Should be if the department head is recommending. And actually, the Town Administrator already does assist, you know, that employment form. I just follow through and make sure departments complete those and the selectmen do approve them in accordance with the HR policy and that those are distributed to the appropriate departments.
Brian?
Yes.
I'm not looking at it, so I apologize if I'm repeating something. But the way I would phrase that is that the Town Administrator is responsible for ensuring that the department heads follow procedure for hiring and complete the hiring. And so that way, the ultimate responsibility for making sure it got done is Marlene's, but the people doing it are the department heads. But I'm not looking at the wording.
Thank you. Well, it's, I think you probably cleaned up the language that's here, which is what Cindy alluded to, which sort of oversees.
Yeah, just responsible for ensuring that the department heads are following procedure and filling positions as required. Twenty-five years of human resource experience.
Seems to me that you might want to parallel it to the superintendent, school committee, school structure. Superintendent at the top of that pyramid ensuring that perhaps the principals are following things they should be following. That's the way I've been trying to think of it for some time now.
Thank you. Lydia, out of the corner of my eye, I'm looking this way and I can see her.
And I, again, I don't have it in front of me, but I, oh, there comes something, something about boards and committees. So, does this mean that everyone appointed to a board or committee is now going to have to have a physical?
No, 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 no. We're not talking about physical.
This is a different subsection.
This is about the application process.
Well, the application process, but it also talks about boards and committees.
Under the application process.
This is just who applies for a job before you get to getting hired and needing a physical or anything?
So I think when we bring forward recommendations for appointment, I present it to the Board of Selectmen, the appointments. So we're already doing that. The Board of Selectmen ultimately approve that.
I don't think this is really changing much for the way we do it. I think that, but, but because it's here and the way I wrote it about makes the recommendations for filling the department, the boards and the committee. I mean, certainly can make a recommendation, but ultimately, the responsibility for hiring is within the various board. I mean, would we all agree to that? I mean, the police chief should hire.
I mean, that's the intent.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and that, that is applicable to 8.1 and 8.2. That's the only reason why I, you know, brought that up. Because 8.1 or 8.2, both of them, does not refer to the Town Administrator.
So if I could offer this, so if we strike, this is just a suggestion. If we strike everything after assists with interviews, makes recommendations for filling department board and committee vacancy, if we struck that and went with what I think Betsy said, or Betsy can say it again, but rather than oversees and handles town departments with their hiring process, it was more.
Responsible for ensuring.
Responsible for ensuring that the town departments.
Are following proper procedures.
Following the proper procedures per HR.
To fulfill openings, right.
Does that, does that make sense? I mean, Marlene, does that make sense to you? I'm just trying to clean up the sentence a little bit.
It's the board's decision, yeah.
Well, I know, but, I mean, we're, you know, we're trying to, you know, this is a collaborative effort. I just don't want it to be where ultimately somebody could interpret it as saying that the Town Administrator is the one who has to do all the hiring of everybody and that's, that's not, I don't think that's the role we want you to have to play. Given that we have department heads in various capacities and departments, I shudder, so. That would be my suggestion on that particular. 8.2 on, like, for the application process. But I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, so.
So Betsy, does this sound right, responsible for ensuring that the department heads comply with the proper process?
To fill positions, yeah.
We can sort of clean it up if we think we need to fix it. Go ahead, Chris. Whoever's the head of a department. Police chief, fire chief, department of public works. Police department, fire department, department of public works and whatever, you know, whatever other departments we have, where there's, where's the head for, town clerk, town collector, town, you know, whoever, whoever's in a, who's ever in a position of hiring people in their department.
So like the water superintendent or the highway superintendent?
No, 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 no. The DPW director does that hiring.
Which would be in charge of the water?
Correct.
The sewer?
Correct, correct, yes. Water sewer. I know, but I think I just answered it three times, Chris. The DPW director will do the hiring for all those departments. Mike, did you have something?
I'm assuming that this is exclusive of the school department.
Yes, sir.
Does the school department have a set of HR policies like this or it?
Yes.
And will anyone make to kind of review that in light of this and see if it makes sense to, that they're both consistent, except for collectively barring the situation?
Which is ninety-five percent of the employees in the school department are barred for employees, right? So, so really, you have the, the non, you would have the kitchen staff, I suppose, custodial staff, you know, that, that aren't part of the teacher's contract type things. So, yeah, right. But they do have their own, they do have their own hiring policy and procedures. Which, by the way, I, I mean, obviously, some of them are the same everywhere, in every business and, and others are just specific to the schools. So it's not as general as some of these are. Different rules and regulations. But, yeah, they have queries and other things they've got to do. Yep. Which brings me to, so are we okay with that particular, for now?
That's good.
For that one, yeah, I did have one other question, but that's on a different one.
Yeah, I was just going to say, let's, let's move on and then we've got about one minute and then we'll kick it in with them. So go ahead, Cindy, whatever question you have.
Okay, the Town Administrator. Subsection 1, advertising, the second half of it is underlined. So that, was that there or is that new?
No, I underlined that, just, you know, to bring attention that, and then adding what the Town Administrator's role is. That's why I was saying that really what I have in red in your copy is applicable to Section 8.1 and 8.2.
Okay, and Section 1, the second half of it, just, you know, the finance meeting, it says, if a vacancy occurs or a new position is established, the department head may, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen, advertise the position opening. The first part of it says that the town clerk advertises it. So does that mean in addition to or instead of? Like if both want to advertise it, is that what it means? In addition to or does it mean instead of?
No, I think what it means is if it is, if the department head determines that the position shall be posted. Well, actually, all employee notices should be, should be posted by law.
But it says it should.
This is to advertise, right.
Right, and it says all should be posted by the town clerk?
Correct.
All right, so I'm asking if.
So advertising would be in addition.
In addition to, but the town clerk still would have to do it, so it's consistent. Okay, thank you.
Okay. You all set with that one? With that, those changes on that first page?
Probably.
Well, you don't have to be.
No, I don't mean it that way.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't I make the, I'll make a suggestion that we'll pick this up at our next meeting? Because there's some changes about queries and. You know, the safety of the employees.
That's pursuant to the law.
Yeah, and they are pursuant to the law. And I only say that because it's 6:30, we're, got our pals here from the Finance Committee. Got a lot to go through. So I, I don't know, John, maybe, why don't we, so for now, why don't we, we'll stop following the current agenda so that we can get into the budget cycle. We're almost at the end anyways of ours, but.
Okay.
Okay?
Whatever you guys want to do.
You guys okay with that? Cindy? Ed? And then we'll just, we'll come back to this in a second. Okay, so John, we're going to take a two-second break, please, just so people can position and get their paperwork and all that. Thank you. Very much. So we will now continue our meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. And we've asked that Edwina give us an overview of the Treasurer and Collector's Department or, yeah, Treasurer, Collector, both. So we're going to go over the budget for next year, right? Okay.
I'm not sure how your packets were put together.
We'll start with tax title.
Tax title, that's right on top of mine.
Right on top for everyone else?
The order you gave it to me, I believe, so, yeah.
Next page, next, the other packet. Going.
This packet?
Yep, look at that. Doesn't that say tax title?
Yeah, it does. All right, so I had the wrong packet in front of me.
No, no, yeah, we'll get, this is the long side.
We're going over the budget, sorry.
Let's do the budget first.
Oh, I didn't realize you already had packets, because I made copies. Okay.
You made packets, but then we gave a secret packet.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Yes. We have lots of packets.
These numbers, the detail that you're going through now, the Treasurer, Collector's Budget, are they in Marlene's schedule already as we are here?
Yeah. All right, thank you. So yes, tax title, Edwina, please.
Tax title. I've reduced the tax title from sixteen to ten this year only because I don't feel that we're going to be able to get to the tax title work that's required with everything else involved. So I have reduced it, but next year, you know, twenty is going to go back up.
And I just wanted to mention that you, you say reduce, but it actually is $10,000 for this fiscal year.
$10,000, yes.
For this fiscal year.
For nineteen fiscal year.
No, I'm talking about eighteen, this fiscal year. What town meeting authorized last year for, it has a $10,000 budget?
So leveled then.
Didn't go up.
No, it didn't go up.
If you wanted leveled, we did level.
But the document I had had sixteen thousand on it.
I see a hand note down there, yeah.
That was the requested.
Okay. Okay, Hampshire County Retirement is next in my packet.
Yes.
That was in John's.
That's a fixed, I mean, we don't have control over that.
Right.
It's going up $31,488 in fiscal nineteen. The attached letter that I have for Hampshire County Retirement tells us, excuse me, if we pay it by July 1st, we have a savings of $10,556, so that's the plan.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Unemployment funds, for 2019, I've got $20,000. It was $20,000 last year. I, I think we should keep it the same because we've already spent $17,000 this year.
Quick question. I'm going back to the retirement system really quickly. You said that's the plan. Is there any reason we wouldn't be able to make that payment by July 1st?
I don't see any reason why we can't. And we certainly will try to save $10,000.
So you think, you think it'll be fine?
Yes.
We just put caution on everything.
Any, any questions on unemployment? Any, any questions on unemployment? So, do you think 20 is gonna be enough? 17 seems a little higher than normal.
It is a little.
Did we have some layoffs this year?
We had two school employees and one, the assistant treasurer.
Oh, right.
Collector that left.
Yeah.
So, three employees, so 20,000.
Yeah, and this is one you have to be, as we're going forward with budget, we have to be careful about personnel, so if we think we're saving money-
Right.
-by letting people, somebody go, which we're not talking about, we have to add money here for that.
Yes.
So, anyway, just, just, okay, sorry.
The group health insurance is another one that we-
That's a big bump.
Can't really control. The insurance rates are going up 4.7%, but last year's budget is going to be short, 2018. With my estimates, it's gonna be short about $18,000 for 2018. So, that was underbudgeted for '18, fiscal '18.
That might be something that we could find at the end of the year when we're doing year-end transfers. That's not an unreasonably high number that we, but, but we'll have to keep that in mind, whether we need to bring an article to town floor to take care of that, or we think we're gonna have enough money at the end of the year to transfer funds around.
And it'll be tighter this year with transferring, because we already asked folks for money for the special town meeting, so they, you know, so it's probably gonna be a little tighter this year.
Yep.
Any questions on that? You have the backup behind there on, with the new rates and so forth.
Yeah, thank you.
Medicare expense, we're going from 82 to 84, just in case we hire some new folks.
Okay.
Just bumping it up a little bit. And.
Then you're going to debt.
Debt and loan, can we leave that for last?
Sure.
Sure.
Because that's what the other packet's for.
Okay, so then we're gonna go to treasurer's expense?
Correct. The only thing I'm increasing there is more for postage, $300 worth of, more in the postage line.
Okay.
Everything else is level funded.
Everything else is.
Bank fees will be the same?
Yes.
Okay. So, then we have, go to the salary side and?
Yes, the salary side for the treasurer, this year it's difficult, because we don't know what's gonna happen in May, whether we're gonna be split departments, we're gonna be combined departments. So, I've given it my best shot here.
Okay.
Any question on that? The assistant treasurer went from 35 hours to 40 hours, which was approved at, I think, two meetings ago, that she could work-
Oh, okay.
The extra five hours. So, I put that in to be in the budget for next year. And then, the temp that we have, I kinda split her time between the treasurer and the collector, so you'll see some on this, on the treasurer's side, and then you'll see some on the collector's side.
Okay. So, the, the bump in the treasurer's side, what is, is that ours, or is that, goes from 30, I mean, it's nominal, but I couldn't figure out what it-
It's ours. You got the, the person that's a temp now.
Okay.
Some of her time, so there's an increase there.
Okay.
So, it's not just one position, because if it were, then it would be an increase-
Right.
Above ours, so it includes other things?
Okay.
On the collector's expenses, I'm increasing postage again there, from $7,100.
To $8,000.
Eight hundred, $8,100.
Okay.
And the other line that I'm increasing is the supplies for the tax bills. We've run out of stock and envelopes this year, so we have to bump it up.
The cost of bills went up.
Yeah.
Right.
The software, we heard from Point Software, they're going to be hitting us with a 5% increase.
Okay.
And then, the mileage is for schooling at UMass.
Yeah.
We'll have, Sharon will be going to UMass again this year, and hopefully, a second person, you know, that we hire, if we hire, will also attend classes.
And this is for tra- collector training?
Collector, yes. There's collector and there's treasurer's.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Can you explain, or tell us more about the postage increase, why such a drastic increase?
Because some of the postage costs were going against the treasurer's side. Postage increases need to be in there.
Okay.
Can I ask Marlene a question? On your IT support budget that we reviewed last time, that IT support was perigis, is that right?
Correct.
So, that does not include Point?
No.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
The collector's salary is, let's see, I did put a 2% COLA on the collector's side.
Okay.
And the clerk's side is the other piece for the temp that we have now. That whole salary for the temp was going against the administrator's budget this year.
Professional services, yeah.
Yep, so.
So, it'll be moved out of that, and it'll be put in to these budgets?
Correct.
So, and then, depending how the vote goes in May at town floor and on the ballot, hopefully, we'll have the, this combined-
Right.
For future years. Which makes a whole lot of sense. So, I don't know, so that's for the budget, so maybe, is this an appropriate time to talk about how this works going forward with the role of Bay State?
Do you want to talk of the debts first?
What?
You want to finish the debts?
How about the debts later?
As part of our budget?
Yeah, we can talk, sure, we can talk. It, it-
You don't have to. They are what they are.
It doesn't matter. It's not, it's not gonna change.
I, I think Darrell's point was, was about, as far as office, you know, office assistants and, so, is that okay, that we just talk about that a little bit now?
That's fine.
Okay, so, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, because they're to hear every single day doing it, but-
Yeah, right.
We've had the good fortune of actually not needing to use Bay State Accounting Services as, as much as we thought we were going to a few months ago going into this, because of Edwina, Sharon, and Joe in the office, and the expertise experience that, that we have there now. So, we haven't had a, a person from Bay State actually need to come in and work with us. Is that true? They're, they're available via, you know, phone call or conference calls, or, or some sort of guidance in that instance, but originally, we were thinking we were actually gonna have a person coming out here to, to assist us. We don't think we're gonna need that. We have them available, again, via phone, and I suppose if something came up, they'd be willing to do so, but we aren't paying them on a, on a regular basis to, to, to assist us in the Treasurer and Collector's office.
Correct.
Did I say all that correctly? Is there, I don't know if you guys want to add anything or clarify anything, or?
You said it correctly.
Right, and so, the reason I ask that is, you know, going forward with the budget, I just want to make sure we put enough money in the right places to account for that, but it, you know, so, so then it would be my understanding, or my question would be, then most of what Bay State will do will be on the accountant's side.
That is correct.
And are we gonna put that in the accounting budget, or in the town administrator's budget?
I would suggest the town administrator's budget.
Okay, just so we remember where to put it.
Because that's gonna fluct, you know, that'll fluctuate.
Sometimes-
I mean, that would be my suggestion.
I would, would, yeah, because we don't, because there's some variability in that, and if we keep it on the, in the administrator's side, I think it's just, it's just easier.
Increases flexibility.
Yes, it does.
That's fine, I just, we need to remember that for your budget request for '19.
What's happening right now with Bay State's involvement with the county office?
They're doing accounts payable.
Yeah.
They haven't started yet. They're supposed to by April 1st. I just wanted to mention to the board members in your packet, you have a copy of the agreement from Bay State Municipal Accounting?
Yep.
And it, you can skip the first three pages, it's more really just standard language for an agreement than reporting procedures, and he lists out the tasks that his office will be performing and the departments involved in that.
Okay.
That's beginning July 1st?
Well, they've been continuing to assist along this time, but as of April 1st, accounts payable is, is in their shop.
What contract is April 1, begin date?
Yeah, I have the draft, I don't know where, somewhere in my pile here. I think it's gonna kick in whenever we, whenever we sign, whenever we sign it, because we've been paying them all along, so this just sort, without-
Just formalizes it.
It's actually dated March 14th initially.
Yeah. I compartmentalize it into two different things, getting us through from now until June 30th, and then what do we do from July, July 1 on, or, you know, so.
So, in, in thinking about keep, you know, remembering for your budget, what we need to add in regards to Bay State, based on what we're hearing now, do we have enough within the professional services line? Because I know we drastically increased it last year, I'd have to look back at your proposal this year.
We spent it. I don't have anything left.
Well, no, but I mean, for this year, I'm saying for next year, what, you know, without pulling out your budget, what you proposed.
Right, and we had talked about whether that $30,000 is adequate, and so, we received, you know, a cost from Bay State Municipal Accounting for this fiscal year, until, you know, for the remainder of, of '18, and then for '19. So, we'd be, you know, looking at significantly, we, we should actually add another $30,000 in there.
Okay, that's what I was asking, is the amount proposed so far enough, or if you needed additional? So, you're saying another 30, so are we talking like 75, 85?
Including other possible positions.
I, I, I thought, the way I understood the letter, and you guys can correct me, is it will cost us $30,000 to get us for '18, to get us through-
Correct.
-June 30th, and it'll cost us $60,000 for '19.
Correct.
Even though it seems like we're gonna need them less, or even with that information?
It's mostly on the accountant's side.
Right.
Wow, okay.
So, and in addition-
And he's doing the reconciliation, too.
He's doing reconciliation. So, he is, he is helping, he is, right.
He'll be doing that.
Right.
So, that's why I say we need to add another 30, but that would just give you 60,000. 9,000 of that is just the town administrator's regular expense, that, so that doesn't cover-
Yeah, because we have expense, right, we have expense, you have, you're-
So, 50 of that is related to the extra.
So, there would be 60, and that would just be covering Bay State Municipal Accounting.
That would be 50 plus-
Let's get back.
The additional hours we're adding for different positions related to these offices, and, all right, so we're-
If you're doing that, but the treasurer, collector's office is, is looking, is requesting to add those hours, extra hours in their budget.
So, so let's, let's, let's finish up-
Yeah, let's do the debt and loan.
We'll do the debt stuff, because you, you are right, this is gonna be a whole discussion that we'll have as part of the-
Yep.
-budget going forward.
Correct.
So, you wanna do that?
Sure.
Take it away, Edwina. Sharon.
In this big packet I gave you, the third page in, gives you all the information about the loans that we have outstanding. You can follow it through to the front page. Let's see. Good news is the Bridge, Bridge Street Gore project, this-
Which, which package are you on?
This big fat one.
The other one.
Debt loan.
Just debt loan on the front.
Debt loan principal, okay.
Page 3.
You guys don't have that, that was part of our budget, not the budget.
Well, she said, they just said page 3.
We didn't hand it to you, though.
Right.
Do they have a different packet for this?
Remember I said I was gonna give them the detail behind the two pages?
Okay, I don't have that, okay.
Okay. So, Bridge Gore.
Bridge Street Gore, the sewer project, the loan that we have is gonna be done in, in fiscal '19, that'll be the last payment.
Wow.
So, that is good news. The, the town hall garage ended last year, so we are not budgeting in fiscal '19 for anything there, that's done. And all the details are behind, so I just opened it up for questions.
Okay. What, so what's new that goes on this year?
On page 2? Just about the whole page, except for the top three items.
So, and of this, of, of the new that goes on, is any of it newly debt exclusion, or no?
There is one that wasn't marked that I did find. It's the water line, phase 2, that is a debt exclusion.
That is a debt exclusion, okay. So, that will not, that will help us a little bit.
Looking at like, what, 120, 130, and additional, if you pick that 80 out?
So, if that's debt exclusion, what is, how much is that payment, is, is it the-
How much is from taxation?
How, that's what we want to know.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what.
So, the debt exclusion for water line phase 2?
Yes.
All that-
The $74,000.
Plus the 57?
Yeah, and interest.
And all that would, would be part of the debt exclusion, so, but, go ahead.
According to the paperwork that I have, yes.
So, that would not be, that would help us in terms of taxation?
Taxation, right.
It doesn't help townspeople, they still have to pay for it, but as far as us doing a budget, that's $79,000 we don't have to fund. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, just want to make sure my brain is working.
Did you say that we don't have to fund?
We still fund.
Uh-huh.
Do you say, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Fund, fund. No, we know we have to fund it. Darrell meant find, you know, we don't have to go look, you know, where are we gonna come up with $79,000?
When we get to the levy limit?
Yeah.
Well, this front page will show you.
Right, but, but once we get down to it, that part of it is, any of the debt exclusions don't follow through.
Aren't part of that, right.
This number I just clicked on right here, the 645,193, all are debt exclusion.
That's the debt exclusion.
That's the debt.
Wow, that's a lot in debt exclusion.
Well, we added some new, well, we already had some.
Was, was any of the town hall project debt exclusion?
I haven't been very able to verify that. The town hall renovation, I've not been able to verify that.
You guys remember? The roof we paid for, right? Didn't you just say that we're done with the town hall roof?
No.
No, the town hall roof we're not done with.
The roof's on Darrell on the first page.
The town, the town-
I mean, it's not a tone, but it's-
But it is, it is a debt exclusion.
It is debt exclusion, yes.
It is debt excluded, but, but phase 1 or whatever, don't-
The offices upstairs were also underneath, big debt exclusion, too.
The offices upstairs were also underneath, big debt exclusion, too.
That's phase one.
Is phase, so is, go ahead, so is, so that's what we need to figure out.
How much of the, yeah, I think what you're asking, Daryl, is how many of these are debt exclusion?
And I can show you on.
Debt exclusion debt.
And I can show you, whenever you're ready.
And we're only showing 645,000, but debt exclusion debt, that's, that's two thirds of this.
So, if we go to the financial operating budget.
Yeah, go ahead. It's, it's up, it's up on the screen.
Right, so here we start with, with our debt, um, Bridge Gore.
That's debt exclusion.
And that is, and that's on that summary page, but that's not included in the debt exclusion, that, there's another line on that front page, which I'll show you when we go back to that.
Okay.
Um, so we go down here to town hall roof, that's a debt exclusion.
Yeah.
What's highlighted in yellow is what's been added.
Okay.
And it's, so the energy savings, the Green Communities grant that we have.
Let's just stay with debt exclusion, sorry.
So, we go down to the fire tanker truck, that is a debt exclusion.
Yeah.
And, and we scroll down to... Water transmission line.
That's a debt exclusion, yeah.
That was the first one, that's a debt exclusion, and this is the one that was authorized last year.
The second one will be a debt exclusion.
The town meeting, the second one has been added, we're picking that up now, so that's a debt exclusion.
So, so where are any of the town hall borrowings in that?
Town hall borrowings?
Yeah, for the renovation project.
That is right up here.
I, I, I get that, but what I'm looking for is not the roof, I'm looking for.
Right here, town hall renovations.
There we go.
We've added those, and Smith Academy Park, we've added as well, and Horse Mountain.
But, but what about what's already been done? You know what I mean?
We didn't have anything else for, um, we didn't have any.
Did we not borrow any money?
Yeah, that's 86 and 87.
No, that's, that's coming forward. Where's that?
Isn't that fiscal, isn't the first, isn't that first?
Oh, town hall renovation, yeah, here, so for this current year.
That's this year, 18.
That's this year.
That's next year, 20.
Right, so we, we did have, we did have it for this current year, we do have payments.
Only 20,000?
Right, 20,000?
No, still doesn't make sense to me.
Well.
Because, sorry, we got phase one, we got phase two, so, phase one, Ed and Jeff helped me, that's when we did the offices.
Offices, that's correct.
So, where did we borrow the money, we had to borrow some money for that.
I thought that was 800,000.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Right, yeah, so, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's true, I have it highlighted in yellow because I added it, um.
There's nothing on these.
Am I crazy?
No, you're right.
This is all we have.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure.
Town hall, the debt schedule at the bottom.
40 times 20 is 800,000.
At the bottom of the debt schedule from the treasurer's office.
Yeah.
Town hall renovations, three lines up, shows fiscal year 18, and proposed for 19.
Right, but it's not, but that's not a debt exclusion, that's just a regular.
We don't know that, we have not determined that.
We gotta figure that out.
Right.
We should have a pay.
It just doesn't seem like it's that much money, because I know we're starting phase two, right, and we borrowed some money, we, you did some engineering work and stuff, or architectural work this past year, that we have to start paying for.
And there was an election for phase two, to cover phase two costs.
There is an election for phase two, was.
There was.
Is that, is that, is that, that's gotta be separate from this town hall renovations.
The town hall renovation that's on the list, we borrowed 200,000, and then.
So, it's a 10-year loan, if it's 20,000 each year.
Okay.
Because don't forget some money came from.
So, was that phase one?
CPA funds, or CPA.
CPA, right.
It doesn't really say.
Oh, okay, so we, we need to do some research, we don't know if that's phase one, or.
All right.
I don't believe it's phase two.
Yeah, because when you and I talked, talked this morning, or this afternoon, we were talking about what I assumed was what we've already done for phase two, we didn't even talk about phase one, but we'll work on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll follow up on it.
Would it be possible to just add, once this gets, once you guys do your research, just put phase one, phase two?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll do that, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I mean, just if there's a question on this, just so we make sure that.
Daryl, I think you wrote down last year on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah, so we just have to.
Make sure that phase one triggered phase two for, for CPA compliance.
Right, but.
So, why do we have to be there?
We had it separate. Separate borrowing, yes.
And we had it separate.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions by anybody on debt?
I ask these every year, um, is there any way that we can consolidate our debt, so that we can get a lower interest rate, or maybe even spread it out over four years, and not necessarily to hone in that, but to lessen the impact of our debt burden on an operating budget going forward, um, you know, we've got a lot of, I don't know how many borrowings are associated with these, I don't know, how many line items are here, but is it, is it possible for us to, to refinance our debt, I guess that's the simple, the simplest way of saying it, such that our debt burden each year, our principal interest payments each year are less than they are, um, I mean, that's a, I mean, this is a huge amount of money, you're looking at 800,000, so whatever this is.
30,000.
Yeah, and we've just added to that this year 200,000, that's the difference between 19 and 18.
230,000.
Yeah.
230,000.
Is there any way that we can do that, you know, perhaps the, you know, the treasurer's office can look into this by talking into, talking to some lenders, some municipal lenders, uh, if they look at our debt schedule, and looked at what we've financed, when, and what interest rates, you know, is it possible to tranche these borrowings, so that we can lessen our debt burden right now, and perhaps for the next four or five years, um, you know, if we can reduce this 800 grand to 650, uh, you know, there's another 150 grand that we can use to put back into stabilization, no, I, somewhere.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
I, no, I see, exactly, and, and my only concern right now, it's not a concern, but you, you're exactly right, but Edwina's and Sharon are just getting going, and once we have, I think this is a great thing to, to look into, once we kind of.
Bay State might be a while.
Get the financial stuff in order, but, yeah, okay.
Daryl?
Yeah.
Last year, there was a combination of loans, they were brought together in a serial note, so you have to be careful, too, when you combine those loans, is it gonna cost us more to combine them, and it depends upon the cost.
Sure.
It, it could cost you more to combine them than it is to borrow another loan.
Right, well, I agree with you, but someone needs to, you know, that's possible, but it may be possible that even with the additional cost of borrowing, the closing costs, and the origination fees, or whatever, points that it still might be worth taking a look at that, to reduce our debt burden on an annual basis going forward.
Especially any of the older loans, I would think.
Yeah, which are probably at higher interest.
Well, that's what I mean, because the interest rates, I mean, the last couple of years have been very favorable, but anything over a few years, probably, yeah.
That did happen last year, because they combined like five different loans into one serial note.
If I recall, some of those, we've got some real good rates, so, the old loans, I mean, we got a quarter, 100 percent, a half percent, so gotta be careful on it.
Right, oh, yeah. Well, water filter filtration, which I think we're gonna pay for, for the rest of all of our combined lives, I think that's a fairly low interest rate, that's one that you're right at, I don't think we can touch, it was a farmer's home loan, it was something that you can't. Okay, thank you.
No, that's a good idea, Mike.
Are you looking to calculate?
Is, is there any way, that we could sometime get a column added to this that says when these things will actually get paid off?
Sure, the backup information does.
Oh, the backup does have all that.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you, not the first couple pages.
Right.
But if you get deeper into the packet.
It does say.
It says biological contract, number one, number two.
Yeah.
Uh, number two has one, two, three more years to go.
Okay.
Okay.
It actually has the interest rates on it, too.
Oh, yeah, this is good.
It's quite a bit of information.
Yeah, thank you, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll look through it.
Upgrade, and, uh, there's one that was paid off that I made a notation on.
Right.
They're all at 2%.
The town hall garage, it has, it has all what you're asking for on those pages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a lot of them are done in the next two or three years.
A lot of them are.
But it'd be nice to see you write a column right next to this column, you know, what.
On this cover page?
Yeah.
That's easy to do.
Yeah, just add a column.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Edwina, Sharon? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank you for your continued efforts in the collector treasurer's office, really, yeah, thanks for getting those tax bills out, after many of us wanted them, but we all know we needed them, so, you know, everybody worked hard in that, so thank you.
We sent ours in today.
But thank you, keep sending them.
So, do we wanna start going through the spreadsheet now?
Yeah, I'm done.
You okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
What, what I would suggest is, Marlene, if you go back to the first page, and, the, the cover page, and maybe, let's, let's go through that line by line, just, that's kinda, I think, I don't know, Betsy, I thought that was kind of a helpful exercise to look at what feeds into those individual, um, budget lines.
Do you want to expand that a little bit? I think it is, oh, I don't, well, I don't know, whoops.
Down the bottom, down bottom right. See, right there.
Right here.
Back, yeah.
No, I think that's just for the next sheet.
Nope, no, over, down a little bit more.
There you go.
Oh, right here?
Slide bar.
Keep going, the slide bar.
Right there, yeah.
There you go.
It's at 75, 66 percent, other way.
Up the other way.
Yeah, they gotta center it, yeah.
Center it.
62 percent.
Well, I'm not.
There you go, hit that sucker a few times, see if it'll make it.
That's good.
I don't think so.
There you go.
So, how do we get it back over there? Okay, let's do that.
There you go, yeah, it's.
How is that?
Can you pull the frame, you know, does it let you? Yeah, I hope it lets you do that, and just drag it right.
It's just widening it.
Darn computers, whose idea was this anyways?
I think you can keep increasing it, and then just keep moving it.
My idea.
Oh, okay.
It's my idea.
Increase it a little more. And keep just moving it like you were moving it. Even more. Yeah, you can go more even. Yeah. Yeah.
How's that?
Yeah, we'll just have to see it in sections, we won't see it all at once, that's fine, there you go.
Yeah.
It's looking better.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
We good?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very better.
Not for me.
It's not good?
Not, everybody's happy with it, fine, I got one of these.
Okay, so we should start with the first line, so that's the town operating budget.
Yeah.
So, if you look at the cell up in the left hand, up here at the bar, the formula bar, so that comes, go down here to the operating budget, and that comes from L 161, so if we scroll all the way over, and L, they say 161, so there is our operating budget, right here, so as you will see, this is just for, just an FYI, so when I was working on this late yesterday, and then today, I'm off by 3,500, and I can't find it, so I need another set of eyes, so if anybody sees anything, please let me know, so.
What's on?
This, see this 10,000, 257, 734?
Compared to?
And this number over here, those two numbers should agree.
Yeah, right.
So, I, you know, and the spreadsheet is spread out, so you're going through, I'm checking everything.
It's not 10,000.
All right, so that's where that number comes from, so back to here.
Right?
All right.
Okay, good.
So, right now, the numbers that you have in the operating budget are running 6% ahead of last year.
Correct.
That's what that's saying.
And that, correct me if I'm wrong, Marlene, that's, everything that can be level funded is level funded.
Right.
Except those items which.
Right, contractual obligations, debt, and that, that pretty much is it, everything else is level funded. Health insurance would be anything that we, we don't have any flexibility.
You move, like Lydia's elections, that went up?
No, you've got that level funded right now.
That is level funded.
So, that, so, so we'll have to change that, because we kinda have no, that's one of those that we have no choice.
And that's, those, those are discussions the selectmen and finance committee need to have, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, you know, at the same time, if, it could be a transfer, you know, I mean, there's, there's, well, there could be a transfer of, you know, money later, we're talking hundreds of dollars, right, you know, a couple thousand dollars?
No.
No.
Well, those are based on elections.
How much more are we talking for the elections?
Those are based on the elections that she has for next year.
Elections like, like 3,400.
So, how much, how, how much higher is your budget proposed for this year?
I.
I mean, I can pull it out, I figured you'd know it right off.
Well, I wasn't expecting.
Would you like to go to that budget?
Yeah, I'd like to just see the difference since, since it came up, if you. Well, you can, you can look at, it's on the spread, should be on, it should be on this, town clerk? But this is level funded, though, based on? No, this also has the FY fiscal 19 requested, so, so.
Am I in the right line here?
Is it election and, is it election and registration that, that would come under?
In that area, some.
Actually, it comes under both, because there's some things that are covered under the town clerk side, and there's some things that are under election and registration. What page are you on, Daryl, are you on election and registration?
Where's election and registration?
No, I'm on line 23.
23.
Oh, right there.
So, 3,200.
Okay, so that's election and registration wages, that's line 23, I believe.
Lydia, if I'm, I'm not mistaken, so if you look at fiscal year 18, expense for election registration, 2,660, you did reduce that this year, for that special town meeting when we needed to.
What are you looking at?
So, I just, just trying to point out that it should, it is, so what's in the requested column is level funded, however, I want to just point out that if you look at the fiscal 18 expense column, it says 2,660, I have a note here for the special town meeting we had in January, you gave up 100, correct?
Correct.
Right, so I just wanna point out that while we're saying it's level services, and if you look at fiscal year 18, it looks like it's an increase, but it's not. it looks like it's an increase, but it's not.
Right, we, we said that we were going to have to be careful after that special town meeting for every department who was able to make a contribution.
People to think that, you know.
Yeah, that money goes back.
Right, so, but, but it's going to look less because it wasn't in there at the end, I think is what Marlene's saying, right?
Right.
Correct, I guess I'm not saying it correctly.
No, no, this is a good example, so this isn't the exact, it's 100, it apparently looks, 2018 looks $100, that's than it really was because $100 was given back towards the special town meeting.
Correct, right.
It's worth remembering that with the schools and the DPW and every department that gave us something.
So, so if you look at line 23, right? You've got fiscal 18, and then we've got fiscal 19 requested.
Right.
And the requested for her is 11, I gotta.
11,350.
11,350, but what you have in, in this budget is.
The budget.
Is 6,212.
Right, which is essentially the same budget she has this fiscal year.
So. That, that, I guess, that will, in my mind, that needs to be adjusted because we have no choice. We're going to have three elections this year, no matter, no matter what.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is not much better.
So would you like me to change that now?
There's no choice.
Sure. Is that the election and registration, is that what it's all in?
11,350, good.
Well, there's an additional 3,000, oh, that's probably COLA.
Okay. Oh. Is there COLA in here?
Well, on the town clerk, I'm just noticing fiscal year 18 versus fiscal year 19.
Oh, town clerk, we're on elections and registration, right?
Yeah, yeah, I know, but we're talking total package, I'm saying, is there additional cost built into there? So that, that, that.
I don't have a total.
That makes that, that 11,688.
So I just changed it.
Okay.
So it's 11,000, whoops, where am I here? 11,000.
Just add that up, make sure that's your 11,688.
Well, she's doing it in Excel, then.
Should be correct.
Is that a formula column? So addition, we don't have to check your addition.
Go ahead, Brian.
I was just gonna say, that's exactly what it says here.
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, that was off. Not our sheet.
No, no.
Our sheet is.
You have to remember, there's three columns that's requested, and then the highlighted columns are what is actually in this spreadsheet.
Right.
And so we needed to move, at least my suggestion was, we, because elections, we have no choice, we have to, what Lydia requested for those elections need to be in the, those final numbers.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
In the recommended.
In the recommended, yeah.
Anything else fall into that category? They're not in there.
That's line 23, right?
Yes.
So what was confusing me is if you look at line 22, it's 11,688.
Right.
Yeah.
Which just, sorry, that it came out the exact same.
Yeah, I think it's just.
No, it's 5,000 more than it was.
Oh, the reason I highlighted that, that, the reason that is increased, and I talked to Lydia about it the other day, apparently last year, for, for this fiscal year, when we were calculating, those hours were increased for the staff.
Hours were increased, right.
And it didn't, and that additional hours did not include the COLA.
Correct, the COLA was only computed on the initial hours, it wasn't computed on additional hours. So then it leaves me short.
Yeah, okay.
So I've highlighted some cells just for conversation purposes, and, and that was one of them, just to explain why that's greater.
But this recommended town clerk salary line, does that include, or all of those salary lines, I guess, does that include COLA or no?
No.
Recommend.
No, I level funded, I level funded what I could level fund.
Yeah. So none of these include COLA?
Everything in recommended.
In recommended. The only one that include.
Contractual.
Are contractual.
Correct. Or like, for example, this 11,688, that was an error, we, we shortchanged it, and it's, so that's what it should be.
So your final numbers, front page numbers, don't reflect any COLA increases?
None, none whatsoever. With the exception of DPW.
And the treasurer collectors that you just reviewed.
In the requested, it has a COLA, but not in the final.
Yeah.
Okay, and line 21, the town clerks, because my expenses on that side go up as well, depending on elections.
So what you requested.
So.
I can't figure out which one to look at.
We're in 21?
43,278.
Town clerk. So this is the requested.
Versus.
My, it's the expense line, the salary is.
Last year's budget was 3,4072.
No.
No, the next one, the 59?
To the left of that, $40,000.
It was 6.
40,000 is the combination between the 34.
Right, and see, the expenses were.
59,31 last year.
59,31, is that what that says?
In 9,200, 9,206. 9,206 are what you requested.
Correct, this year.
This year, and that was because of elections?
Correct.
And so that.
Because, for example.
So that 9,206 needs to be in column K where the 6,266 is.
I'm trying to figure out why it's 6,266.
Yeah, I know, because that doesn't.
I don't know.
I, yeah, that.
Well, I, I have 6,266 on mine as well. I don't.
So it was really that's requested.
So then where did this 9,206 come from?
The requested is 9,206.
Okay, so where did, why did I plug in 6,266?
Yeah.
That's my question.
That's what I have on mine.
Did you add some money because she gave $100? No.
Oh, that's it. You gave up some money in your expense. Let me go back over here, right here.
You subtract $100, well.
339, $35.
Yeah, okay, that's what it is.
So that 6,266 is what was voted at town meeting last year.
Okay, thank you, so, so, so if we move that to 9,206? Are we, are, are, are we okay?
I'm happy.
Okay. And we can do our elections?
Yes.
Sorry, this is painful, I'm sorry.
Not your fault, part of the process, man.
So do you want to update all the requested expenses?
No, no. The only reason this one is because this is directly related to elections, which we have, which we have no choice.
Oh, I thought we just did elections.
But what Lydia said is part of the elections come from that line, too.
There are expense items that I pay that are connected to elections.
Okay, I missed that, I'm sorry. I'm focused here.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry? Okay, so this should say 9,206?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go.
Category?
I don't know, we haven't gotten very far enough.
That was one department, how many we got?
No, but she were talking about millions of dollars.
Yeah. But based on the direction we're going, though, it, it makes more sense in the future for that additional expense to be, actually be under elections because we're trying to make sure we have systems in place to know, you know, right now, you're here, but if there were a new town clerk, is that line going to stay the same forever because we didn't know, you know?
I'm following the, what the predecessor, I haven't changed anything from what Louise had done. And for some reason, some of them were under the town clerk's expenses, some were under election and registrations.
Yep.
We never got.
So that's exactly why to start doing it this way. You could, you could change it next year and put it all under election and registration, unless there's a good reason not, not to.
Providing you don't get the monies, you know, for each department from the state, I don't know if that would matter.
Yeah.
That's, you mean the reversible, that goes into a separate account of, of separate.
I didn't know if that's why she's.
So we go back to the summary?
Let's go back to the summary.
Okay, okay. All right, so, the next, God, we're only down to the next line, that's it.
Huh?
Never mind, nothing.
Yeah, I know, we're only on.
I thought we were further along.
No, we're not.
You're thinking out loud, Marlene.
Doing bad time, Wes.
What, which numbers?
The one she's got highlighted right now?
The 556,000?
You haven't determined what, what financial articles are going to be on the.
Well.
No, no, no. Which, which, the annual town meeting articles voted May 18 for.
So you want to know where that number comes from?
Yeah, those, those are the.
And that comes from this.
Yeah.
Page right here. 556, 24.
And what's above on that list, just for.
So we have.
Thank you.
Chapter 90. Ambulance is a prior year expense, so that would come from ambulance surplus.
Right.
We have community preservation. Those are our projects.
Yeah.
Then we have the Smith Academy Athletic Fields that is being recommended, or this is community preser, I'm sorry, let me back up. The 196,000 is the community preservation budget. It's, it's an article that we vote every year. These are the projects that Community Preservation is recommending. Smith Academy Athletic Fields for 96,400. Community Gardens buildings weigh 5,000. Restoration and rehabilitation of town-owned parcels, 15,000. The construction of a hiking trail, that is a borrow. And that's an Open Space Committee article. That's.
That's for this. That's for this coming.
It's on the warrant.
Town meeting.
Right.
All those, all those are for this coming town meeting.
That is correct, that is correct.
And so of those, the borrow obviously comes from taxation, but the restoration, community gardens, athletic fields, and all come from community.
If we go over here, here's the community preservation reserves.
They come community preservation.
And those are in there. So that's the total column, and then it itemized, the columns to the right itemize those.
So really, as of now, none of those are under taxation.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Now, we have received a request from the Steering Committee for the town's 350th anniversary. They're asking for $25,000, and they will, their letter states that they'll ask for $25,000 over the next three years. I recommend, it's a recommendation, because that would have to come from taxation, and you might want to consider free cash when free cash is available.
When free cash is.
So if we have a special town meeting later this year, perhaps we add that article then, but again, it's the decision.
Can I ask, you have the ambulance prior year? So you just jogged my memory, we had a question on capital improvement planning. There's a paramedic equipment expense that we voted on, I believe, last year.
$20,000.
Right, and we, we, he did, he did purchase all that equipment already.
I might be mixing apples and oranges, but it was a five-year plan for 13,000 per year. Does this ring a bell? And there was a, a set of 13,000, one of the years last year was missing? So I just wanted to know if there was any correlation to that ambulance prior year.
No.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
I.
Steve isn't.
Do slightly, I haven't received anything from capital planning yet.
Cindy, Cindy looks like she remembers.
There was a $60,000, $60,000 expense, which sounds like it'd be about right, and that was for an advanced CPR.
Right.
Module, so they could, you know, for paramedic use.
Approving it, but then as the monies went through, it was a five-year plan, 13,000 per year.
And I do recall that.
Yeah. Yeah, so let's circle back on that.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
And that particular amount is just.
But this is not related to it.
Yeah, that's just a prior year expense, and you, you've got to go through this process of, because it's, so in our mind, it's like two years ago, even though it's prior years, I mean, you know, it's all because of the way we do it. So that's how you have to get the, you've got to get town meeting approval to actually pay a bill that you really owe, it just didn't get through the whole process of being paid, so.
Is it possible for the 350th funds to come from CPA?
That's what I've ordered.
25 grand a year.
I don't think it meets their, their guidelines.
But there's, there are historical segments for it, you know, and it has, it's historical, there are segments to that celebration that are historical.
Have you approached CPA? Have you approached CPA? We're in the process of.
Yeah. Okay, so, sorry, can we, let's go to state and other charges.
Okay, so state and other.
Unless anybody.
State and other charges.
What, Mike?
So, I think it needs to be said, though, that there are, there could be additional capital items.
Well, the Selectmen and Financiers Committee have talked about deferring capital projects to a later town meeting.
As of now, no.
We don't anticipate having free cash.
Capital plan, I haven't seen a capital plan, but for fiscal 19, or just you guys are tabled.
Yeah.
Though, without actually seeing them, I mean, you know, we don't know if anything is more urgent than others, I mean, I think I'd have to actually see it to consider.
Pretty, pretty.
There is one from DPD, that's, there are Phase 2 of the wastewater plant that's mandated for 47,000. And it's in the capital's hands, but we want to present that. Is that a from sewer available surface, or?
Sewer available what?
But it's still got to be watered on this, regardless of the course of. Well, I think Marlene is waiting to see what capital forwards for you.
Yes. So there could be some additional funds.
There could be.
Well, it sounds like the 47.
And the plan going forward, I mean, I, I think certainly we need to get through this. Once we get down to the bottom and we see what that levy limit number is, then we can start talking about what departments we want to, that, that need money, that we want to fund, what we want left in levy limit, then we can actually decide about some of these other items.
And like we do every year with capital projects, we, we prioritize the best we can.
The best we can.
If something's a state or federal mandated, if it's an emergency type, or, you know, emergency department type of thing, we try to.
Yeah.
To do that, and otherwise, we'll wait till fall.
So at this point, you're holding in abeyance the possible article to replenish the stabilization fund?
We don't have any money to replenish stabilization.
We need to know what free cash is to do that.
As of now, we got 394,000, and that's just been reduced tonight, so.
Yes, to answer your question.
State and other charges.
Okay, so remember, and there will be a test at the end of the.
There is a test.
All right, so we go to the state and other charges tab. We have the fiscal year 18 column, fiscal year 19. This reflects the governor's.
All right.
Numbers.
I'm not forgetting that this year.
So. So.
And there is the 1.4.
That's the, right, so let's go up to snow and ice. So, and this is my bad, when we were sitting with Marlene and Betsy going through this. And we talked about, we voted, oh, we're going to put $45,000 in snow and ice, well, that's not the snow and ice budget.
No, it's.
That's the snow and ice deficit.
Correct.
So that number needs to not be $45,000, that probably.
Right now, as of today, you go ahead, it's 75, 76,000.
76, okay, so, last time we reported was 6.
That's above the 35,000?
So I'm going to plug that in right now, Phil.
So we'll plug that number.
What is it, Phil?
Does that.
Seventy-six.
I'll just round it up because it's 75.
Seventy-six?
It's 76,000.
What, isn't FY 19?
No, it's 19, the current fiscal year. We're in 18 right now. So that's the current snow and ice deficit.
Well, what are we going to put down for FY 19?
Well, I had recommended 102 at the previous meeting and, and everybody agreed that should have gone by.
That's because we didn't understand.
Oh, I didn't even know, I didn't look. They're supposed to get a couple.
And I thought everybody understood that it's separate.
Wait, hold on.
That should be zero.
The fiscal 19, 45 should be zero because there's no, no deficit yet.
Right. But this is an estimate, estimated number. It's an estimate.
We estimate the deficit?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Based on your history, you're estimating your numbers for fiscal year 19.
Is there a budget line?
Yes.
But that's.
There is a separate budget line for snow and ice. And I didn't realize that.
Right.
Some of you didn't know there was two separate.
So, so.
Where is that?
So, Marlene.
Well, when we go to the budget, the operating budget, I'll show it to you.
When you put the 76 in fiscal 18, does that funnel through to, to our, to our 19 budget?
That's why I'm, shouldn't it be in 19?
You know what I mean? That's, that's why I think, I still think that.
No, it's not, it's not changing right now on this front page. Fiscal 18 column, I can update that number. These are not, there are not formulas in these cells.
Wouldn't change 18, shouldn't it change?
We can't change 18.
You can't change 18. We can only change 19. I still think that 76 needs to be in FY 19.
Exactly.
You are right, Darrell.
It should be in FY 19.
Because it's an F 19.
The title of that account should be prior year's snow and ice deficit.
Right.
Well, we're still going to have to report the fiscal year 18 snow and ice deficit to DOR. So we need to track it anyway.
But why don't we put in fiscal?
I can do that. I can put whatever number you want in there.
We want 75.
I had recommended 102,000 based on our previous history.
But we have a little money in the budget, right?
Correct. We do. So whatever, you want to make that 75?
I think we call it 80.
Let's fix fiscal year 18. What did you have there before?
Sixty. Because that was a couple of weeks ago, we were up to $60,000 in deficits.
See, I, it should always, my opinion is that should always stay the same.
And then at the end of the year, you get the real number and that's the difference that we have to make up.
But, but to me, this, these are the real numbers we're talking about.
Right.
Right.
I'm talking about fiscal year 18.
It's just in the wrong column. I think that's the issue.
It's the real deficit number. It's not the budget.
Right.
Yeah, no, we.
It should be in 19.
We, yeah.
Yeah.
We realize that, but it, the two payoff.
Do you want me to plug 76 in there?
Yes.
Should be prior year's deficit.
Because, because, because the problem is, we, the fiscal year 18 budget, we, we voted on, we.
It's over with.
It's done.
We solved that.
So whatever we do in 18, it's never going to go to 19.
We're going to have to make up that deficit.
Yes.
We did.
No, we, for 18, that was for the previous fiscal year.
Those were for 17.
That was for 17.
That's 76 we're going to pay for in 19.
So, so I guess the question, Marlene, that I, I don't under, that I, I understand your point, so long is the fiscal year 18 deficit funnels into our fiscal year 19 budget?
Right.
Then I'm happy.
It does not impact fiscal year 19 right now.
It has to.
But it.
That's, that was the problem last year.
When the account from the treasurer, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's how we got in trouble last year.
Do you vote to complete the recap sheet? When, when we complete the recap sheet for 19, don't we have to report that snow and ice deficit, the 18 snow and ice deficit?
I believe you're right.
Yeah. Yeah. But, and, and I know you, all right, I, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing.
When are we going to pay for the 76?
So let's leave the 76 in 19. And one of the things that, that we all talked to Marlene about is we're going to have DOR, have Terry Williams take a look at this.
Oh, yes, I want him to take a look at this.
And, and I think Terry will be able to help us in that.
And specifically estimate about that.
And we'll, because we don't want to make that mistake.
I don't.
Go ahead, Mike.
I don't, what was that, what was that snow and ice deficit number under the column fiscal 18?
60.
At May of last year, when we voted the fiscal 18 budget?
Yeah.
Because we can't just arbitrarily change that number tonight. That was approved by town meeting. You can't change any of those numbers for fiscal 18 without a town meeting vote.
Mike, when we propose a budget, much of this is estimated, the local receipts and the state, correct? It's estimated.
So that number would have been an estimated number?
Correct. Correct.
Who's that town meeting?
Yes.
And then every, every year, it's an estimated number.
Right.
Right.
And then when we move the numbers from.
So we can't change that now?
Then when we move those numbers over, like I did, you know, fiscal, so what you see for 19, we know that was 18 last year. So I moved that column over. Even the cherry sheet numbers, those numbers change later after town meeting. I go in and update those numbers in 18. These numbers in the fiscal year 18 column are not the numbers that were, that we had last year when we went to town meeting.
Right. That's right. Because the 18 estimated snow and ice budget that was approved at town meeting is not the right number.
That's right.
Because of the deficit. You put the deficit into the recap sheet.
Correct. So we don't, we, we shouldn't be putting deficits up here. That goes on the recap sheet. We, that should be a thousand dollars more than it was last year. That, isn't that the part we're talking about?
The budget?
Yeah. For deficit.
Last year's estimated snow and ice 18 budget was 45,000. Whatever was up there to start, that's what was approved at town meeting. And if the, if the snow and ice budget was 145,000, you all have 100,000 in the recap.
Correct.
In what year?
Hold on one second, though. We're not really approving that deficit at town meeting. Town meeting doesn't, voters don't see this. This is a worksheet that feeds to that summary page.
Right.
That the Finance Committee and Selectmen work with. So we're not, you're not, we're not voting.
But you are. The town meeting is because.
Well, it's part of this.
Amount from taxation. Go down that.
Right. It's part of this worksheet.
Go down, you're going to see an amount from taxation. Go down.
Back to the state charges?
You're going to see, no, 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 back on your summary sheet.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. State and other charges right here. So let's note.
Keep going down. Keep going down. All right. You see, property, let's see, is it property tax assessment? That line item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's the amount.
Right. This all feeds to that.
That you're asking the people of Hatfield to raise from taxation and to calculate that amount, all those numbers above are in the calculation.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're really, the town is voting on.
We're voting a budget.
Which is why we keep it down.
We're voting budget.
No. It's two different things.
Right.
We do keep the budget down, but this one, we have to put in what's based on what we actually spent this year.
And, and that's what goes on the recap sheet, all right?
But we.
To pay, to pay for it.
But, but it's got to be here, too. The mistake we made last year is we didn't have it here.
We didn't have, have what where?
We did not have the snow and ice deficit.
There was a snow and ice deficit, deficit number plugged in, but it wasn't enough.
Right.
So it seems like if we put the 76,000 in 19 and Terry Williams is going to review it, that's our safest bet probably at this point.
Right now it is, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we're good for now.
Right. And, and if you follow through on that front page, it did reduce the levy, it did reduce the levy limit by X amount of, you know, down to 355, so.
But since you're leaving the 76 in there now on the 18, shouldn't you revert that back to 45 or whatever it was?
No. I, I don't think it matters because.
Because that's going to give you your levy limit at the time.
No, no, because 18 doesn't, in this budget, 18 doesn't feed into 19.
Correct.
And that's where we get confused because I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, isn't the snow and ice deficit taken out of the free cash?
No.
It's not?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, not necessarily.
That's where it came from.
Did it end up coming from taxation?
It can, but, but it's got to be, it's got.
Got to be accounted for.
It's got to be accounted for on the recap.
Yeah.
Right.
One of the things that might be helpful, not complicated, is to run a column.
Yeah, I don't want to complicate this any more than it already is.
Yeah, right.
Which is, which is fiscal 18 estimated year end. And then you'd have the adjustments that were made and, and the actual cherry sheet numbers that came in. And to the left, you'd have fiscal 18, which is the budget that was voted annual town meeting. But, I mean, that, that might be just too much to ask, so.
Yeah. Okay, let's.
Okay, so go back to the summary page.
Any other question on state and other charges? Can you, can you go back to the detail on that?
One moment, please.
Just so we can.
1-4-9-3. Yeah, that's the same number.
Yeah, so, so just look at these other things that are in there.
So the cherry sheet offsets, that is if, when we go to the estimated local.
Receipts.
Local receipts.
School choice.
Right. So those, those numbers are offset here under state and other charges. So this is, this 990, 508 is the library and school choice. We don't have school lunch.
Yeah.
You know why the school choice is there? Because it actually goes to the school department and not to the town.
Right.
So it's an offset. It's going to the town's budget.
And this is state and county assessments?
Yeah.
This is, this number comes from the assessors?
The overlay, right.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions on that, guys, girls?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
Prior, now we get, oh, yeah, total gross budget, 12 million.
Right.
And now.
Now we go to state receipts.
That budget went down. I've got total gross budget on mine says 12, 7, 276.
I'm sorry, what's that, Darrell?
Why did that change?
What number changed?
Total gross budget?
Total gross budget.
Well, it changed because we adjusted Lydia's numbers, town clerk and elections.
Bumped them up, though.
We went up.
So it should have.
Yeah. So, so the number I have on the, we all have on the paper is 12, 276, 350. Oh, no, it did go up.
It did go up.
It did go up. Okay, we're good. Thank you.
12, 276 is 315. Okay.
It's getting late already.
All right. State receipts.
Yeah.
So here are our receipts. Am I missing a page here? Here, I'm missing.
Those are local.
Yeah, there we.
Yeah, those are local. Where is receipts? Why am I missing that? Oh, right here. Right here, it moved.
Okay.
What did that? Okay. So we have chapter 70. So this number, 2.2, should agree with that. Okay.
Right.
So we can go through this.
You got chapter 70.
So there's your charter tuition.
Charter.
For 70.
No school lunch, school choice receiving, that's.
Right.
That's why you got to offset it.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is our local aid, the 322,00621. Veterans benefits is down.
Yeah.
Decrease. Hopefully that will change. And then this is a receipt we received for veterans.
Yeah.
State-owned land.
Boy, they pay us a lot. Actually, that went up.
Yeah, it's graphic.
Yeah.
Why is that?
Yeah. Any reasons? Is it the Horse Mountain project or what is it?
No, we own Horse Mountain.
Yeah. I wonder.
Is that North Hampton, Phil? You might know. State-owned land.
Yeah.
Do you know, is that from, that's North Hampton?
Why did it go up?
Why did it go up? It went from 1,700 to 4,100.
Where is it? State-owned land? That has to be.
But I thought it was by North Hampton. I could be wrong.
Well. Wouldn't Quavo, right, Alberta, could give us.
Yeah.
Well, but we, do we know that that's the case? I mean.
Yeah, these are all estimates, you know.
Right. These are estimates.
These are all just estimates. We'll just have to, we'll check in. We'll check.
And then you have the library.
No, I agree.
The library's up a little bit.
And then total state receipts, okay.
Okay. Any questions?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that local land thing.
That's mass DOT properties. North Hampton would be the city of North Hampton.
Right.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
DOT property.
So if it is, that'd even be almost more surprising to me that they would dramatically increase what they're paying off. Yeah, unless they took more land or something, things like that.
Okay, local receipts, you want to pull that one?
We just did, didn't we?
No. We did state receipts. This is local.
Oh, I'm sorry. Great.
And there's a dramatic increase under license.
Here we are.
That's, you guys sat down.
So we tried to be conservative.
Yeah.
And, and we're, we're pretty much, you know.
It's based on what we, what we've taken in this year, right?
What's the total? Is there anything in there from the assessors that we, we can release some of the money from previous years from the abatement? You know how we hold so much money back and sometimes just...
Oh, yeah.
When's the last time they reverted any money back was?
Yeah, I don't...
That's...
I don't remember where that, where does that come in? Does that come in here? That doesn't come in here, does it?
That is, um, right here, the abatement allowance overlay on the state and other charges.
Increase?
Sure, you speak, no, that's not.
Check, maybe...
I think I just talked about the overlay account.
The overlay account.
Sometimes they release some money from the overlay back to the town.
Correct. That is...
That's a balance account.
You know, we should have a tally of what they hold back every year.
Yeah, isn't that on this page here?
Like a revolving fund.
I thought it was on this page. I'm thinking new growth, okay. Okay, there is an increase in the licenses and permits. And the reason for that is the inspe, uh, building inspections. We, we...
Excuse me.
Omitted that from the revolving fund at town meeting in January. So we're able to add that in here.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, that's a good chunk of that, okay.
Those are all our local receipts.
That's sixty grand we were talking about in the...
Seventy, I thought, so, yeah.
Can you explain that again? What, I didn't quite hear. The increase, the twenty from the seventy?
The seventy thousand?
Yes.
Well, the fifty, actually.
Yeah, the fifty increase.
If, if you recall, the special town meeting, there was an article to...
Get rid of the revolving account.
Dissolve the revolving fund for the inspectors.
Yeah.
And, because we were, we were including it here and, and reporting it, um, we, we were collecting it, reporting it twice.
And the fifty from the revolving account is consistent with what we brought in this last fiscal year, or is there an increase built in? So is the fifty what they brought in, in the revolving account last year?
Multiple revolving accounts.
Well, I don't know how much is in there, um, but I did add a line item in the operating budget for those additional inspectors. That had been recommended by Justin Cole, that we, we add it to the operating budget.
Okay.
The enterprise funds, um, water and sewer budget and any articles, we don't have any articles for water and sewer. These numbers, um, for the budget come from the operating budget tab. And I have now added the cable TV, that needs to be reflected here, we did not do that last year.
And so, do the water and sewer, is that, is that our estimated income?
It's gotta be, this is income, that's...
Gross income from those?
Well, this is the budget. This is the budget, what we're requesting.
So you're assuming that we're gonna get that amount in income from those two enterprise funds?
Your revenue should be able to cover that, that's what you expect. Right?
Okay.
But then someone, is Phil or somebody done a projection on what those revenues are gonna be from water and sewer?
Phil has, he has, actually, I have that.
Right, and then there's a two percent increase or whatever. Right, that's...
So eight eleven nine oh one.
Okay.
And that comes from the local, go back here, and that's that number right there.
Right.
Okay.
Community preservation.
Now, community preservation.
That's just an estimate.
That's on that same, again, those are, yeah, that's the budget that we vote.
Right.
For them.
That'll get changed once we get actual...
Other available funds, so there's five hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty-three.
Yeah, what is that?
So if we go down here, other available funds.
Oh, yeah.
So you have...
You have chapter ninety in there?
Chapter ninety, that's an article, actually.
Yeah.
Then we have the enterprise fund for cable TV, twelve thousand from school choice.
Oh, yeah, that's for Phil's position.
From ambulance revenue to fund the operating budget costs.
Yeah.
And we have the cemetery perpetual, I'm sorry, septic betterment.
Yeah, and then the cemetery.
And then, plus the articles adds up to five hundred and twenty-eight thousand fifty-three.
Plus what articles?
Uh, chapter ninety.
Oh, yeah.
The prior year bill.
Yeah.
And community preservation.
Okay.
And I'm missing some articles, aren't I?
Okay.
Okay, so we go back to, right, where are we?
Okay, now we're gonna go, so that's total, we're down...
So there's total receipts.
Total receipts. So next is total budget, which...
Now we're gonna calculate the tax rate, so you have your total budget.
Yeah. With the total receipts.
Correct. That calculates the property tax assessment.
Which is coming to right now what an eight percent increase over this year.
Yes.
So it's...
Really?
Right, so if you look at this formula, it calc, it's based on these two right here. E twenty, the total budget and the total receipts.
Right, but does...
So right now, if our valuations do not change in the community, we're asking our taxpayers to look at an eight percent increase in their property taxes.
Well, some of that is based on debt exclusion.
It's still, it's in here.
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
You still raise it from taxes, even though it's excluded from debt.
I, I understand, but, but my point back is...
Tax rate didn't go up eight percent.
Tax rate didn't go up eight percent, we voted, we, we voted some of, you know...
Right. Just to be clear, I under, I totally understand what Mike's saying, but I just...
You gotta pay it at some point.
No, I, but the, the point is, you know, you don't wanna say you're expecting the town to go up eight percent, and so people think that their tax rate went up eight percent, 'cause that's not what happened.
Right.
It will go up eight percent. If, if, if nothing else changes, our tax rate will go up eight percent. Because we're asking the town to raise eight percent more money from taxes. So if all of our valuations remain the same...
I don't think that's right.
Tax rate's gonna go up eight percent?
No.
Of course it will.
No, no.
No.
That... Because we still have, I mean, the closer we get to the levy limit, the more taxation money we're using, I mean, we're, we're leaving money on, you know... Right now, we've got money left on the table, so...
Right, which means you could raise, we could raise more money from taxation, so that eight percent would go up even more. It would be higher rates.
Right.
Or even go as tax, giving people a break.
Anyway, let's move on.
Okay.
Further discussion, but yes. Okay, levy limit, is that where we are now?
Yes.
So there's the previous levy limit, that's, that's the, the, right, the seven oh seven five? Is that the two and a half percent?
This, this number right... This number right here comes from this number right, this number right here, D, D forty.
Last year's, this is last year's levy limit.
So you take the previous levy limit, previous year, so that was last year's.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there's your two and a half percent. Statutory, two and a half percent, and then new growth.
There's no debt exclusion there for the sewer, the water line?
No, it's coming, just wait. That's six hundred and forty-five thousand.
And in those numbers, Marlene, there's no new growth yet, right?
Yes, no, there is.
New growth is eighty-eight thousand thirty, right now, that's, that's what it is, I don't expect it to change much. And then we have the debt exclusions.
Yeah.
Total six forty-five.
Yeah, that's, that's, that, that's the big, that's the big bump.
Yeah. And then we jump down to the water sewer debt exclusion, that is bridging gore. Bridging gore, it's not part of, of this number up here, debt exclusion.
And that will be the last year, right, Edwina, that we pay that?
Last year.
That'll be good.
Right. So now, the adjusted levy limit is eight million fifty-two thousand six twenty-eight. And we jump down to property taxes.
Yeah.
And then less the adjusted levy limit, which is right up here. Leaves us with three hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars under the levy limit.
Okay.
Without capital projects and others.
Correct.
Yeah, without any of the budget, any, any of the requests.
Cola or anything.
Eighty-six thousand dollars for the school.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, goes, goes on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Marlene, can you go back to that property tax?
No, go ahead.
Here.
All right, see this, the seven six, whatever it was?
Seven six five seven.
Way down at the bottom after the levy limit. It kinda summarizes it again.
The adjusted...
Yeah, seven six nine six, that, right there, yeah.
Where are you?
Last year was seven one oh six. Property taxes, right where you're at right now.
Oh, oh, okay, the seven, seven million six ninety-six.
Almost six hundred thousand dollars.
Eighty-three percent increase, it's the same increase we stopped above. So I, I still contend with you guys that that's asking people, if provider valuations don't go up, you know, on the commercial side, that people basically are gonna go get an eight percent increase in their taxes.
And, and I think, you know, it's the debt exclusions that contribute to that.
Yeah, well, we have almost a five hundred thousand dollars in debt exclusions.
Right, that's, that's the contributing factor.
Right. Okay.
And we're still not refreshing our stabilization fund.
We will, we will.
'Cause we haven't gotten free cash back yet.
We will.
We don't even know what free cash is here. Do we have an idea what free cash is here?
No.
We're, we're not even guessing.
No.
Doesn't do any good, though.
No.
We're like scratching tickets here, hoping. Wait, does symbol match up with symbol?
Well...
Okay, what would you like to do?
So you asked a question about free cash, and I guess my question is, is there any way that we're gonna get seventeen wrapped up, audited before June thirtieth?
Who knows this answer?
I think Sharon does.
No.
It's not, not coming from our ass, office, perspective-wise, but I just don't know that it's realistic. And I wish she was sitting here, 'cause now I feel awkward, but...
Let me, let me ask.
And, and I, I don't, I don't wanna ask it to be awkward, I'm just, for planning purposes, you know...
I'll ask, I'll ask it.
Yes, so she started to work...
So, two or three weeks ago, we asked the accountant where we stood.
Right.
And two or three weeks ago, the only month that had been completed, we were told, totally reconciled, was the month of July.
Correct, correct.
So my question is, two or three weeks later, are we any further along with the other eleven months? And I'm not, I'm looking at you, but I'm not asking you the question, Sharon.
I can answer the question, and the answer is no.
Yeah, I don't believe we are.
So, there's your answer.
That might be a question that you want to ask Bay State.
We've had a, we've had some con, yeah, that, that is a question for Bay State.
We know that Edwina and Derek got together last week and went over some documents, but we aren't any further along.
Okay.
From our perspective, I can, I feel comfortable speaking for Edwina and saying that her starting to look at that eight hundred thousand dollars of unimplied revenue, like we had this conversation this afternoon, was, there's a lot of it that'll be a little easier than, and Derek's making a lookout, in that he pulled out way more than we thought he did.
Right, we knew that, yeah.
We knew that.
We did, but it's, I guess, even more than I thought personally, that was gonna be stuff that she's already was able to get him answers. So they were able to get some things off of the list, so, but that's not, that's a very one small step of getting all these other months, because...
Right.
My understanding, and clarify me if I'm wrong, was that we were going to keep going with the other months and kinda leave that, but we still haven't made any progress. You know, we're still talking the same numbers and the same, you know, situation, so... You know, we feel strongly that we can, you know, accomplish this from our side of things, but we can't get him any further, and, and maybe Justin's helping, and I just don't know about it from the, in the backside of things.
That's gonna start April first, he's gonna write supposedly, he's gonna do, Bay State is gonna do A, A and P, and it'll free up Derek to have more time, so, okay, I don't...
Likely we won't have free cash.
Yeah, so for planning purposes, we're probably not gonna have, and, and, and the reason I asked this is if we don't have it certified before June thirtieth, it means that before we can use it again, we have to have fiscal year eighteen...
Right.
In the books.
We have to have it closed out?
Closed out.
Submit free cash certification.
To make free cash certified.
Before you can even get the tax bill out, too.
Well, no. No, not before we get tax bills out, but...
Probably shooting for winter twenty nineteen.
And, what, what DOR wants is these things, let's see, what is it, the Schedule A is supposed to be submitted by November first. And so, free cash number by the middle of October, something like that, is what they recommend. So...
So you're talking about eighteen, fiscal eighteen?
Yeah.
I mean, can...
But we can't spend seventeen money.
Right, okay, sorry.
I guess my, my point is, I'm wondering, I mean, can we ask Bay State? I mean, we're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars with them in the next ninety days. Additional, on top of what we've already spent with them, I don't know what that number is, it's water over the dam.
Right.
But can we, can we give them some specific objectives? That we would like you to do everything possible to reconcile and close out fiscal seventeen by June first?
And they know, they know that.
Yeah, they know that.
They know that.
Do they do know that? I mean, is that in their contract?
The question's been asked, Mike. And, and, and I, I made it perfectly clear, a couple of weeks ago, Marlene and I have had conversations, and, and Marlene's talked to Justin, because I'll be perfectly honest, my thought was, let them do the reconciliation and let Derek continue with the AP process. It, it, so, so the, the response to that from, from Bay State was, well, the, you know, the institutional, day-to-day operational knowledge and where he's worked on it thus far seems to make more sense to them to, for him to continue that than for them to do it. That was the conversation that, you know, with letting everybody know exactly what it was.
And he would have to start from scratch, right, but at this point, we're not that far ahead anyway.
'Cause they probably couldn't just take his stuff and go on, they pretty much would probably have to start over.
So, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and see how my colleagues feel, and let's have that conversation again with Justin.
Yeah.
About flip-flopping, because I just really feel our hands are tied and, and...
Not only do we have a conversation with Derek, I think, we have to have a conversation with Derek and Justin. I think we need to converse with both of them to find out why we keep getting roadblocks on this stuff, because I, I keep hearing, oh, this one and that, that's...
Totally agree with you, Ed.
Because, because we've got, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars of free cash at stake here, that you could apply to this budget.
Yes.
And people wouldn't receive, wouldn't be seeing an eight percent increase in their tax rate potentially. So, I mean...
No, no.
No, no, no?
Sorry. So my counterpoint to that is what's in this budget is from taxation, what we spend in free cash, yes, it's gonna go, it goes back, hopefully some goes back to stabilization, but we use that for capital items. We have very rarely in the past ever used free cash money for normal budgeted items.
And we have two years of things we've put off, too.
Right, and so, in here, even if we have the free cash...
I, I would, I agree, I hear where Mike's coming from, and I agree with Darrell, I, I think the bottom line here, though, what we all agree on is we need this completed, this reconciliation completed, audited, certified, and everything else that has to happen before June thirtieth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At, at the latest.
Well, no, no, it's gotta be before June thirtieth, 'cause if we wanna use that money...
That's what I mean by June thirtieth.
Be able to have a, no, no, we have to have a, we have to have a town meeting.
They said we'd have to have a town meeting before June thirtieth.
Before June thirtieth, so...
To spend fiscal year seventeen.
And, and when we met with DOR, DOR said to the auditor, I don't need like, you know, the complete, you give us a thumbs up, we'll certify and we'll, and we can go.
They did say that.
So if, if, if by June first, week, June fifteenth, we can have that done, then that gives us the opportunity to...
And knowing that it's coming, we can have time to, to schedule the town meeting.
To schedule a town meeting.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah. Betsy.
Well, I need eyes behind my back, Mike.
Has Derek, did Derek do fiscal year sixteen? Has he ever done this before?
Done, oh, the reconciliation?
Ever reconciled a year?
No, no.
No.
That's part of the problem.
Okay. He was supposed to get the training for it, and then we've just had these problems, and we've had to outsource it and come in and work with him, but he's not really learning it to do.
Who did we outsource it to?
Uh, Tom Scanlon Jr. came in previously.
Can he help us again?
I don't think we actually officially reconciled.
Well, that's true, he came in and helped close the books.
He helped close the books, DOR was happy with that.
That's right.
But...
So we, we have, that's...
And, you know, when, in defense of Derek, he came in, when he started the job, he started a year, two years behind, unfortunately, so it's been an up year, up...
It's just we've never caught up.
We've never caught up.
Would Tom Scanlon be helpful again?
Well, that's why Justin has been...
That's why we have Bay State.
No, I understand, Justin, but Justin hasn't made any progress. So now I'm wondering about the effectiveness of that combo of Derek and Justin. So the next question is, if Derek and Tom is a better combo...
All hands on deck, Ron.
Well, I would, I would, I would, I would go back to Brian's comment about them sitting down with Justin and, and Derek and talking about, you know, putting dates in to get this done.
And Mike's and Stan's staying back amongst, yeah, I agree, I totally agree.
Go back and, and maybe have, have Derek continue with AP, but whatever.
Which is a simple process, quite frankly, and, and, you know, this doesn't involve a great deal of accounting and financial expertise.
No.
But closing, you know...
Yeah.
Closing a fiscal year, reconciling months and closing a fiscal year is not more involved than, than processing accounts payable, quite frankly. And, and, you know, if Bay State can bring a whole bunch of resources to bear and get that fiscal seventeen closed out, then we've got an opportunity to find out where free cash is going to be and, and build on how we wanna use it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I disagree with you.
Otherwise, we're going, we're off again, one of them.
If you don't close seventeen, you're gonna impact eighteen.
It's gonna be the same thing, right?
Right.
We're already behind with eighteen.
We're already behind.
All right, shall we move forward?
Yeah.
As best possible. So, yeah, so I, I guess my question now is, do we wanna discuss, you know, are there budgets that we should have Marlene increase, I mean, there were lots, there were, there were several, several budgets that requested increase, like the school and, and, and some others. Do we wanna talk about that now? Do we wanna put those in? Do we wanna decide on a bottom line levy limit that we wanna stay to? Do we wanna say we, we wanna make sure we have a hundred and fifty, I don't know, I'll throw out a number, do we wanna make sure we got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a bottom line levy li, levy limit to make sure that we don't have any problems going forward?
Or do you wanna look at all this data and come back next week and then take up that discussion? Do you think you want some time to actually review this, or do you feel you've had enough of time to review all this?
Well, I'd like to hear what other people think is important to them to put into the budget. And, and we, we didn't talk about the thirty thousand dollars for this year that we're gonna need, so, so that would come off, that would be an article that would come off this, if we're gonna pay Bay State sixty thousand dollars next year, we're gonna have to increase Marlene's, um... Oh, maybe we don't have to increase Marlene's by sixty, what did we put in there, thirty?
Thirty-nine, we put the thirty, added thirty.
You could, but, but, but we don't wanna, we don't... We, we don't, we don't trust we're gonna get free cash yet, so...
Let's look at the school.
It's a good point, but...
Say it again, we, we didn't, didn't we at, when we went over your budget, didn't we add money on the top of it already? Isn't it up to sixty-nine now? I thought we...
We, we, last week, or the last meeting, we did talk about increasing it, and, and then we had said, let's leave it at thirty-nine for now. And then we wanted to find out from Justin.
So if Justin said sixty for next year...
Plug it.
So you already have thirty there?
Do we, do, if we have thirty-nine, do we plug sixty, but what else did you use that?
That thirty thousand for this year.
Yeah.
Paid for Justin.
Forensic audit.
Paid for the forensic audit.
Forensic audit.
And...
Help in the treasurer's office.
No, that, that was coming out of my wages, which...
They paid for Joe, didn't they?
It came out of my wages, which, my wage account was not budgeted for that.
Budgeted for.
It was, yeah. Um, there was something else.
Does the attorney come out of there?
No.
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 So, if we change that to 65, is that a comfortable number?
Oh, I know what it was. We paid an additional $10,000 for salaries for, yes, it was for your office. That's right, for the other position.
So, we won't, we, we, we're not going to do, need to do that. That's been separated, so if we leave, we make that 39, make it 65, just to cover ourselves a little bit? What do, what do, what do, what do people think about that?
Good idea.
When Scanlon came in last year to help do Schedule A and stuff, where did that money?
That was the previous year. Justin helped with, with Schedule A and, for the previous year.
Well, yeah, we haven't done Schedule A for 17.
Yeah, for 17. 16, Justin helped with that.
Another whole discussion.
So, would you guys be okay rather than 60, 65, just make it 70?
Yeah.
And the reason I'm saying that is if Justin's 60 and Marlene really does have 9, which is usually carried forward for those other things, so why don't we just?
I, I'm okay if you change.
And then if we have to come, you know, when we go through all this, we have to come back, then that's when we can tweak something a little bit.
And do we all agree we've gotta have a article on, on, for fiscal year 18 to pay Justin the $30,000 he wants for this year? No?
Derek, how much is left in that town hall?
None.
Also, the other question, there, he's recommended numerous times hiring a, like a retired or a part-time tax collector. Would that have to come out of there, too? Is that just coming up?
Okay, hold on, we got too many conversations going on.
Bay State municipal keeps recommending, and they have prior and now, you know, in the latest proposal, hiring someone to collect taxes. Part, remember they recommended a part-time person who was retired or whatever? Is that gonna, would that have to come out of that same fund? Or is that already taken care of? They increased their hours and put into their budget. So, that's already there? That's in the collector's budget.
We had a separate conversation with Justin with what our game plan was. He put it together, his own proposal.
Right.
Without really talking to us about what we think we can accomplish.
That's what I'm referring to, yes.
And so, I don't think, and, and I'll speak for Edwina again, since she's not here, that we don't need that. If we have Edwina, myself, and Joe being that part-time person, we upped her, she's been working like 15. It's, I think, 20 or 22.
Between the two offices.
But she has a little bit more hours that we can get all of this accomplished without having to bring in.
I just wanted to know if we're gonna have to consider that in that budget, too?
No, you're not going to, you're not, that's already considered in our stuff, so you don't have to worry about that.
Thank you.
Was it reasonable?
Yeah.
I made a note, but I can't remember what it means.
Okay.
I wrote down John Sullivan remainder.
Oh, we talked about that last week. So, I have not received any additional.
Who's John Sullivan?
He's the forensic auditor.
Yes, oh, yeah, because there was.
And we still owe him money.
Well, I don't know.
Don't know. Marlene didn't know.
And you know what, I will, I said I would follow up with him and I did not do that yet.
Did you ever get the results of that back?
I'll send it to life first.
We did get a report.
Oh.
Actually, that's in draft form and John has requested to meet with the board.
So, so do we wanna, are, are the selectmen considering putting an article for the 30,000 for Justin for this year?
Well, we'll have to come up with the money somewhere. I mean, we hadn't spoken about it, but, you know, I would imagine that's what we're gonna have to do.
Right, right, because we can do that.
And where did the money come from, yeah?
From.
Now, didn't we previously?
Taxation.
Didn't we talk about budget transfer, if possible? I mean, we, we did discuss that, right?
The problem, well.
Well, we didn't know what we were looking at for cost from him. You had thought about maybe finance reserve, but.
If we contract Justin to, to help us for 30,000 for the remainder of the year and we get to the end of the year and we don't have enough money to transfer, then it doesn't look so good. I would just as soon find the money in this budget, take it off our bottom line, add an article for, which we can do, for, you can do, for fiscal year 18, and it would just be added to your, this line three. Well, whatever, right?
Well, you'd have to put it under some sort of an exception. Yeah, I mean, you, you could do that.
But you guys can figure out the logistics, but I'm just trying to figure out the $30,000.
Right.
And making sure we all think that we oughta put that money there.
For fiscal year 18, for paying him, so we need an article and the warrant.
Correct.
We looked at that pretty hard when we were getting ready for the special town meeting and we didn't find anything. Well, what we found was COA, we didn't wanna touch the study for COA, and what was the other thing? The steps. We didn't wanna touch the money for the steps and besides that.
And then the old articles. Didn't we approve a couple of years ago for a generator at the town hall that was, those articles going on?
I don't remember, not, not that I recall. But, I mean, we can certainly look at it, but anyway.
And then the only other place that I can think of is the older way of town on the assessors that put money in there.
They. I don't think we wanna touch that.
I don't think they wanna.
And I, I don't wanna overspeak, but I'm pretty sure there's, there's a big abatement coming out of that.
Right, they, Jenny reported that at a meet, financial.
At a, at a meeting, right.
So, there's, you know, a large sum of money coming out of that currently.
I, I think that we can look to see if there's accounts that have something because, you know, we find 5 or 10,000 somewhere, maybe you're only need an article for 20,000. I mean, the, the bottom line is we need $30,000 to pay the accounting firm.
Right.
And does it have to be paid before June 30th?
Right.
I would, I would suggest that it probably has to at least be incurred.
July 15th. You can no longer pay the previous, prior year bills after July 15th.
Nice try, though. I like the way you're thinking.
Yeah. So, that would, that would impact, I don't remember, we were at 355 and we just added 30. What's, what's our bottom line now?
About.
320.
Very good.
Um, and then we take another 30 out of that, that gets us to 280, right?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly.
Have you run numbers on what a 2% COLA would look like?
I haven't.
Do you have any idea?
I haven't done that yet.
But before we go to COLA, did, did we already talk about the school?
I was just gonna bring that up.
Right, we started to talk about the school.
Let's talk about the school.
So, let's go back here.
No, but the school, the school's increase, I believe, is 1.8 and it's $86,000 or some, is, is that right?
Yep.
And I'd like to propose that we.
I would keep that, yes.
Putting the request?
Yeah.
So, that brings you down to 200.
I know.
Well, before we include a lot of things, so.
Right.
And I also highlighted the Voke Tuition Transportation 370, 3360. I was notified during the week that they picked up another student.
Yeah.
I mean, back to the school, I mean, we're asking all other departments to try to level fund to whatever extent possible. And with the exception of obviously, you know, contracted. I mean, has anyone had a conversation with John and, and the school committee about the situation that the town is in? And, you know, would it be possible for them to take a look at helping us out? We did, yes.
I think they have.
We met with them. They've made some cuts.
Weren't you at that meeting?
Yeah.
When did John propose to flush it? Yeah, Heather was there.
Oh, yeah, I was there at the meeting, but I, I, I.
Yeah, well, I, I.
It was basically a presentation from the school, so.
Right, I, I can answer the question as a school committee member that we had the conversation. Well, you know, when I'm there, I'm always giving the town side of things as well, you know, but, you know, I gotta have my school committee hat on, and we had the conversation and they, they did cut a position this year, did some revamping. But also had to hire a pair, a one-on-one para, I think. You know, spending, spending almost a million dollars out of school choice for operating and sped costs, so. So, so to answer your question, Mike, I think the answer is yes, and they're aware of it, which is why they gave us back the $35,000 towards the special town meeting. But I, I got the feeling, and I don't wanna speak for him, for John and the whole school committee since they're not here, but he gets it, I mean, he's a very good fiscally to try to, you know, do his thing. So, I guess that's all I would say.
And he did ask if it was level 10 funded, what would happen?
We did.
So.
And he said he would have to, he would have to look at that. And I, I suppose we can, we can ask John to look at it again, is, 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 can he shave some of that 86?
I mean, it may come down to it once we get all the numbers in. I mean, I think I feel more comfortable asking that once we, we see where we're at.
So.
Let's put it in and see what happens.
So, so what other, I mean, I guess we should talk. I mean, are we talking about a COLA across the board to?
Well, before we get to that.
Okay, sorry.
I would suggest that we look at the increase in budget requested by the tax collector treasurer's office. That would be my next choice.
Was that an increase?
The proposed is not in there yet.
Right, because she needs money for Joe, basically.
And for herself.
Oh.
Did you not, you put, I thought that was in here, Marlene. No, that's not in Marlene's budget anymore. That's gonna, no, but I think Marlene, Marlene had Edwina's numbers.
Yeah, I put in the numbers.
That's in there.
Yeah, the requested numbers are in there.
I wanna move it from recommended, I wanna move it from proposed to recommended.
She's proposing.
Oh, okay.
No, all the recommended is all level, level services.
So, I would like to ask that we put into recommended the increase that's necessary to take care of Edwina, Sharon, and Joe.
I agree.
Which is a lot less expensive than having a consultant.
Which is the 39,400.
Yeah, and is it 15 through 18?
Okay, hold on. Gotta look at her budget.
Hang on.
Yeah, it seems like she did her best to give a very conservative budget, so.
15, 16, 17, 18, I believe.
So, she had.
Here we go, treasure expense.
Collector was, I can't do, I can't read two things at once. Collector was 39,4.
That's in there for salaries, yeah?
The clerk was 11,638.
The clerk.
So, so let's just go back a minute. You said the collector was 39,4. She did put a 2%.
Oh, that's right.
So, so you could make that, so the 38,627.
Thank you.
Should be just fine.
Yeah.
But what would need to be added would be the 11,638 for the clerk.
For Joe, for the clerk, right.
Correct? Sharon and.
Yep, and then on the treasurer's side of things, it's just $7,759.
For the, for the clerk.
Clerk's position.
And then the, but the elected treasurer and the assistant treasurer.
Stay the same.
They should be the same numbers.
No, no, they shouldn't because she adds.
Hours.
Additional hours.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Lydia.
Okay, thank you.
COLA is not in there.
So, the collector, that's just the collector's salary under town collector.
Collector is just the collector.
Right, the assistant is in the, is in treasurer's collector's staff.
When you start to go on for the billion dollar issues to the 10 dollar.
So, the 38,627 would stay.
That number, so you're still in collector, so that number's gonna stay.
Right.
There should be a, a line that says, on my sheet, it says part-time employees for the collector's side of things.
Right, and we have a line, it's line item 16, right here, treasurer's collector's staff.
Okay, so that number's going to.
What I did was I added the assistant treasurer and the money that was requested for the clerk on the collector's side.
So, you added what? At the 40 hours a week, not at the 35?
Oh, that's the requested, right here, 70,897.
Because you got an elected.
Taking out the calculator.
Right, you got elected treasurer, okay, the treasurer itself should be 36, 33.
The treasurer is.
The staff should be at 40.
804.
204, yeah.
Right.
So, but when you add the clerk in, it's 70,897. Is that what you have?
Yes, I do, and the requested, I have 70,897.
And then, so what's in the actual?
Recommended is 40,804.
Yeah, so, let's bring that over.
You gotta bring that over.
The 70,897.
So, there's 30,000, we're down to 250,000.
150.
215, I think. Well.
Let's see.
Yeah.
Schools brought us down to 200,000. I don't mean the schools by themselves, but every 30, 30, and 80, that was 140.
Now, we're down to 213.
That's treasurer and collector. That's everything we just spoke about?
Yes.
So, I.
No raise, just increase to 40 and then put the part-time person in the actual set, in the bottom set.
So, the difference between the 40,804 and the 70,897 is the hours for the clerk in the treasurer's office.
The five hours for the, the part, for my current position and then Joe's hours.
Okay.
So, it'll be all funded out of the treasurer collector.
Okay.
So, are we?
Drumroll.
So, are we okay? We plug the school money in.
What school money? Oh, we just, we just, we just increased the school's number.
Yeah, up there.
Yeah, that was increased.
Yeah, so. Yeah, go ahead, Lydia.
The assistant treasurer.
Yeah.
Staff.
Staff.
Brian, right there.
And you have that as recommended in 40,804.
No.
We pulled that over.
That's 70.
No, we pulled it over, including the new hours, right? So, 51,5.
No, the 51,5, I thought that was with the COLA.
No, we took, I took it and we did the math.
You did the math, okay.
I took the calculator out and so I used, if the 51,5 is not with a COLA, that's with the additional five hours a week. Not with a COLA.
Oh, I did 46,633.
That's closer to what I had down earlier.
Which line are you on?
The assistant treasurer.
Yeah.
We don't have an assistant tre, well, that comes, that's under the treasurer collector's staff line.
Yeah. So, assistant treasurer, we got 40,804, right?
40,804.
And then we were adding the $7,759 for the part-time employees, the clerk, the Joe position.
What is that, Derek?
Right.
But before you add that, the 40,804.
Yeah.
That's for 35 hours. That has to be for 40 hours.
Correct.
Which, the way I calculated, I took the 40,804.
Oh, because they.
Divided it by 52 weeks, divided by 35, got an hour.
Should be 52.2.
Multiplied that back by 40 and multiplied it by 52 and came up with the 46 figure.
What is that figure?
46,633.
Should be 52.2.
Because the difference is because of the fact that at the previous meeting, the, the assistant treasurer collector's position is getting paid at a little bit different rate than what it was budgeted at for last year.
Right, which is what I was just looking for.
That was the proposal you guys got in your email about the rate of the pay for that position.
I don't know.
That's what was approved. I just didn't answer your question.
Right, we got, we had, we did get an email, but we didn't discuss what the.
I was gonna say I.
You did get the email.
Of what?
I think it was this morning or yesterday, Edwina sent it out to.
I haven't received an email.
It was a proposal.
I didn't get it either, but I've seen it now.
Here it is.
Just read it, Paul. Just read it, Paul.
You're talking about the letter?
Yeah.
The letter.
The letter.
Yeah, it talks about increasing the hours.
It talked about increasing the hours and changing the rate of pay for the assistant treasurer collector's position.
The letter I received doesn't have a rate change.
And we was proposing that we raise the Joe's, which is the, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, fifty cents per hour, which equates to ten dollars a week.
I didn't notice anything about rate changes, that's why I was wondering why it wasn't in there.
There was a whole breakdown sheet that was on the second page of it, but.
Oh, I only have the first page.
That's the part we didn't get.
I didn't get the second page that broke down because we did, we fact, we did it two parts, two ways. For this fiscal year.
I only have the first page.
The second page had the breakdown of the rates that went with it.
Well, since we don't have that, we can't really add it in right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, but it, that's why the number works based on those numbers and not the math that Lydia's doing. So that's why I felt comfortable doing the math, because it had that, that change in there.
Okay.
We're trying to get like a, a zero increase on anyone's pay, salaries, I'm sorry.
And then we can go back and look at it.
Well, this isn't an increase because of COLA or anything like that, it's because of the signing of the positions.
Yeah, this is an increase because of hours.
And, and the restructuring of the, the office, right?
So, so why don't I, why don't I suggest, cause we have not discussed that yet or voted on it.
Yep.
Raise it to the forty hours at the current rate.
Yep.
Knowing that, like others, as we go through this, that there's been a proposal for, you know, a change.
But the numbers, that, that's why they don't work, to Lydia's point, is it was factored in with that suggestion from that email.
If I'm not mistaken, the Board of Selectmen did approve increasing the hours to forty a few weeks ago when we met with justice.
Hours, yes.
But the rate of pay, no.
Right. So we need to correct.
So.
The staff line, which is the seventy.
Requested seventy-eight, nine seven, and I changed the recommended to seventy-eight, nine seven.
So, that's.
We just wanna make sure that just includes the hour change, not the rate change.
Till we make it official, if it gets made official.
If it gets made official.
But if we, but if we've agreed to the hours, then, you know, yeah. At least get that amount in there.
Well, I see in her email, her letter, Edwina's certainly, you know, making the case on why it would be sort of a different type of position. And she's making the case that it's essentially a treasurer and training for moments like we've been in this year.
Yes, and I don't disagree with it, it's just that we have some, some similar requests from other departments. Um, and one more question I have is for the Board of Assessors for next year. They asked for sixteen hundred dollars to pay legal fees to, because of the appellate tax board area.
Right, separate from.
It's different than our town attorney.
It's different from our town attorney, so did that get included in, it seems to me that's something we have to pay, or, or is that?
Or have available, should they need it.
Right.
Right, so their requested expense is twenty-nine thousand, three fifty, and.
And that includes that tax board, so that's fine, you're done.
No, yeah, but what, what Marlene put in was a twenty-eight, one hundred.
It's the same, it's what they are budgeted for.
Oh, so that's, I guess that's my question.
It's what they're budgeted for this year for expenses.
Okay, so do we need to add that money, or should we just let them figure it out?
Well, they're pretty sure they're gonna have to pay that, and so we might as well, but, we better budget it in.
If we haven't.
So that increase is, is, just reflects?
Just that.
All right, so it should be twenty-nine, three fifty then?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Did you put that in their budget, or would you put that under the town council's budget? The reason I ask is because next year if you don't have.
It's separate. It's a separate, they said it's a separate lawyer, it's a separate charge.
Yeah.
But that lawyer's.
Well, you wouldn't put it in their budget, would you?
No.
Because then next year if they don't use it, we'll forget to back it out.
All right. Good point, I don't know how to keep track of that.
It's been our constant issue every year, actually, is track.
Well, I, I think when we get the, the budget sheets that we work off of, it's got the craziest years.
We would see that, yeah, and it, it would be.
It would be, you know what I mean, so when we look at next year, if we're all here to do it.
We'll say, do we need legal fees?
Right.
We'll see that it said for this year, it, it should show a separate line item of the sixteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, and I think in the, in the summer, when we're looking at the sheets we use and whatnot, I think we should consider that, and see how we wanna.
Yeah.
If you did the math, if you want.
Might I, can we get a total?
Thank you.
At this point?
Yeah.
Is that easy enough to do, Marlene, hit the?
Well, we're still, um, missing the, the treasurer collector figure with the decreased salary.
She has the number written down that does not include.
To subtract out the fifty cents increase per week on Joe at fifteen weeks, trying to figure all that out right now, but I mean, uh, that figure changes, but it's, it's not that dramatic.
So if you do forty hours a week at the old rate for assistant treasurer plus Joe, it's sixty-six, oh, oh, thirty-one.
Well, isn't, well, I think Joe's figures are also inflated to that fifty cent.
Oh, are they?
I guess I'm asking you.
So, so Mike.
I think so, but I also thought that the other thing was different, so I apologize.
Is Joe's?
So.
Can we see bottom line right now?
So Mike.
Which equates to.
Oh, we're figuring this out.
Joe is the clerk.
So that includes thirty to your, to Justin.
But you think hers is a little fifty cents also?
I'll look at the number, thirty to Justin.
Okay.
Eighty-five, eighty-six, whatever, for the school.
Did you put the thirty in for Justin?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Thought we popped it up to, and then, what was that second?
Increased that to seventy, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-one, and then what was that other thirty thousand dollars?
The school.
We did not, we didn't include the other thirty that we have to pay for fiscal year eighteen.
Oh, right, right.
So that would come off that bottom line.
That would be an article, it wouldn't be in the budget.
Yeah, but it would still come out, it would come out of taxation.
You gotta put it somewhere so we know about it.
Oh, okay.
Cause I don't, we don't have any other magic money that.
We throw it in Marlene's for now, will we remember that it's there?
It won't be a fiscal year nineteen expense, right?
It'll be in eighteen.
Yeah.
So it'd have to be an article.
You wanna pop yours up to a hundred then, does that make sense?
Just put it at a hundred, so.
And we'll know what that equals.
Can you put a note in there?
Mm-hmm.
We, we'll, we'll remember that. When, so, so.
I'll remember.
So my suggestion.
Down to one eighty-two.
It, it's ten of nine, and I'm kinda.
Yeah, I wanna go home.
I'm kinda burnt out, and so, so.
Number?
And hungry.
If by nine o'clock, we can kinda close the meeting, we can decide on when we're gonna meet next, give Marlene.
Okay, go ahead, six, five.
And the staff a chance to go back and rework some of these numbers.
No COLA.
Let the.
No increase.
Sixty-five thousand, three eighty.
Is that reasonable?
I think that's reasonable.
Do that task for me, good job.
Okay, so one eighty-seven, we, I just upped, I'm sorry, Darryl.
No, that's fine.
I just changed the collector treasures, uh, collector treasures staff.
That's in there directly now.
So now we're at one eighty-seven.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
So can we get?
Pretty low.
In the next week or so, get, um, an estimate on what the COLA, two percent COLA would be? Just to know.
I can do that.
So what are we meeting next?
Well, that's the next question.
Pull out our calendars.
Do you want, do you wanna meet?
Soon, I, I apologize, but I.
You're leaving.
I'm running away from town as of March thirtieth.
Can I run?
Lucky.
Can we all go with you?
Wish I was going.
I don't even know where it is, but I wanna go.
Yeah, that's right, it doesn't much matter.
March thirtieth, you're going to Europe, I, silly me, I thought, oh, fuck, we're budgeting by then.
Oh, you mentioned. Mentioned that last week.
So I made these plans like six months ago, and now I see how foolish I was.
We knew six months ago.
Or smart, or smart, depending how you look at it.
So I would like to meet next Wednesday, but that's not me.
I cannot meet on Wednesday? Can we do Thursday, or is that?
Do Thursday.
I could do, uh, I could do Thursday.
That's the twenty-ninth?
It's my birthday, I will be here.
We'll go get you.
Come on, we'll bring you a cup.
Know where you'll be, yeah.
So six thirty on the twenty-ninth?
Or Tuesday, I don't know.
I can't do Tuesday.
Marlene and Cindy is the twenty-ninth, is that what the date we just said was?
Twenty-nine, I mean.
Thursday, three twenty-nine.
I could do twenty-seven, but that'll be a little more stressful.
I can't do the twenty-sixth.
You can't do, so twenty-nine.
Yeah.
March twenty-ninth?
Fincom. What time?
Six thirty?
I put six thirty, but.
Six.
I'm finding six, too.
Where, here, or over there? No, let's, can we do it here?
I like.
Yeah, we can do it here, well, I, I, I'm speaking to the chief, I don't mean to do that.
I can't do six o'clock on Thursdays, but six thirty, yeah.
Okay.
All right, and so.
I will ask if we can use this space.
Okay, and then, kinda marching orders, we, we would like to ask the, are we, do we wanna ask the school if they could find a few dollars in that, just, just to see?
We did ask what it would look like, that's kind of what I would let them know.
You know, I, I don't know how to phrase that politely.
I'll ask. I, and, and the reason I say that is, you know, he put, because we're, every department's asked, like, by January first to have your budget, so that's what they base things on. We had our public hearing last week for the schools.
Yeah.
So, the budget was voted on as, as presented. So, uh, the school committee, if, if any change is made, we'll just vote on it again, but I will ask John and explain what we're going through, and just say, you know, is there, has anything changed since the last time you came to see us? You know, he, he gets it, you know, everybody in the school department gets it, you know. The town's always very good to the, to the schools. I think, like to think that the schools are always very good to the town, too, using as much as they can from the school choices.
No, I appreciate it, people clearly have thought about it.
We, we know it's another type of thing.
Is there any reason to talk to a Tom Scanlon or someone like that, to see if there's anything that possibly could be done to come in to assist?
Well, he, I, I, part of it was, um, he, he has a fondness for Hatfield and, um, Tom Scanlon does. So it wasn't really about the money, uh, but he's also an accountant, right, or auditor, or company.
Auditor.
So this is his busy time. So it, it, his availability was limited.
Oh, thank you.
Doesn't mean we can't ask the question. The only thing I would, um, remind us of is we don't want people stepping on anybody else's post, so.
Yeah.
You know, what I mean, so, I, I mean, we don't want, you know.
Yeah, but.
We've got somebody lined up currently, we're gonna have the conversation about changing roles, if that's a possible thing. Who's gonna do AP versus who's gonna chase down these things.
No, I, I agree, I just, at some, at some point, if it's not working, we gotta try something different.
Yeah, right, I don't disagree with that, Sam.
So, so hopefully by next Thursday, we can get an update after.
Yeah.
You folks have had a conversation with Bay State and Derek and.
Who's responsible roles and responsibilities, or whom's, whose?
And, and I guess it's not unreasonable to ask if they could come up with a reasonable timeline, is, you know, can, can they have seventeen done by June first?
Yeah.
Ready for the auditor. Doesn't hurt to ask.
No, did, and are we, we did get something, right, about Schedule A, what was, I got in the mail, and you got something in the US mail, we all got.
The standard letter that they will withhold our.
Right, but, but it's, but Mary Jane Handy, the DOR, made it perfectly clear, send me something. Give me something, help me to help you, right? Give me something to work with.
She wanted to see that we were working on it.
Okay, so, so I'd like a status, if we, we'd like a status on that, um, as soon as we can, too. Uh, that was a conversation, um, you wanna talk about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We've got four minutes.
All right, so, um, what Betsy's referring to is, um, we've had a question in the past, um, from townspeople about the availability of having a second water meter. At their home. Which would be a water meter by itself, presumably to be used for watering their, watering the grass and gardens and things like that. And if it's a separate meter not connected to a sewer system, they don't get paid any sort of a sewer fee, like we all do, if you use your water now, the sewer rates are tied into that.
Yeah.
We don't have a precedent, precedent in town to do that, um, but I do get texts and emails, um, every, every, every now and then, looking for pretty much a definitive answer. Um, the, the select board, when it first got brought up, took no action, uh, and so I thought I would just bring this up, um, in fairness to the resident who's asking. That we did some research and we have an answer, uh, or answers as, uh, from our, our engineer who, who works on the systems and, and does the calculations, et cetera. So, the result is here, I, I handed it out, uh, it's not a secret to, to keep from anybody in the public, but basically, I'll just read the letter, uh, or the response to the question, what do you think? And the response was, the practice of having a second meter for irrigation use is indirectly being discouraged. In fact, some communities that had allowed this practice are discontinuing it as it is counter to the overall push for water conservation that the mass DEP advocates. Of course, the thought is if you're not paying a higher fee because it's tied into sewers, you can, you know, you, you use more water, so, you know, it's. Implementation of a second meter for irrigation use is not strictly prohibited, but would then provide detailed meter data on non-essential water use, meaning irrigation. In keeping with overall industry practices and trends, the town could then implement a special water rate for irrigation use that would be higher than the typical water rate, with a focus on water conservation. From a property owner's perspective, this combined result of these changes might not save the property owner anything. So, I, I get the request, I understand the request, I mean, we have big lawns, all of us, um, but the, the water rates and the water usage and the sewer rates and the sewer usage are directly intertwined with one another, or intermingled with one another. And they both, one helps the other, I don't succeed, or that's not the right word, I'm starting to get tired. So, again, I just thought with the finance committee here, um, Phil and Selectmen and us.
I would support the recommendation in the second paragraph, which is.
Well, so, so that's enough, right?
I would increase the rate for non-essential water use.
And, and that was part of the conversation Phil and I had, was if we, if we decided to go to that type of a route, you have a different, you, you have a different rate. Right, right, so.
Part, part of the problem, from my perspective, is you're using chlorinated cleaned water for irrigation. Or, and I totally get it, but I know of a resident, several residents, that what they've done is they've put a point well in.
Yeah.
Doesn't, it's not a horrible cost.
Yeah.
Most places in town waters within eight feet.
Yep.
And they use that to irrigate their lawn, so.
Makes sense.
There, there are, there are options.
Right.
But I had a conversation with Marlene this afternoon about this whole issue, and, you know, East Hampton does not do it, they don't have the second meter. There's very few, the only people that they allow second meters to is for agricultural livestock, which we do that.
Yeah.
And that fact that.
Right.
You know, the cost of reading the meters, you have to figure all the costs in, what it's gonna cost to read two meters, to build two meters out. So, I mean, it's not just a matter of that part, but, and plus, deep, deep discourages it because of the water conservation.
Right.
You know, that was the essential reason to meter all the houses.
And the finance committee would recommend the rate go up.
Yes.
So it's like.
Well, I, I, I think that's the last sentence, which basically says.
It doesn't, it's a wash.
You know, it just probably.
As it were.
It, it probably wouldn't be a financial benefit if, if we did this, so.
And it's not like there's a hundred people knocking on the door to do this.
That's right.
No.
It's, yeah.
It's very few, and very few.
But, but, could be precedent setting, so that's, that's, that's the concern.
Right.
So I figured with backgrounds that you guys have, um, Darryl in particular, having been a select board member and a farmer, and of different options, and you guys being here, and Ed and Cindy and I having discussed it, uh, at a meeting prior. I thought this might be something worth discussing, so, uh, from, from my perspective, as a board member, I just, I had told the person I, we would discuss it, we have, and I don't think there's an overwhelming, um, feeling that this is a change we wanna make from what we have currently as the town of Hatfield's water regulations, basically, which is, which is one meter.
Actually, I know Darryl was involved with this discussion extensively when he was on the board.
Right.
Oh, yes.
Well.
There was a lot of discussion.
Well, yes, it's, it's good that these guys, it's good these guys are here. Well, you know, on the surface, honestly, on the surface, it sort of seems like a no-brainer, I, I mean, I get it. I love watering my lawn and having green grass, but, you know, I don't like the bill, I don't wanna waste water, I, you know, and I understand the, the interworkings of the various sewer and water and a little bit and, you know, it's, it's all important and it's all got to jive to, to be successful, so.
Rainwater collection can be another option, people don't use.
Right.
The other part of the problem is then it puts Phil in a position of being like the water police, you know? Are they using that, that meter correctly?
For other things, because it's drinkable water, right?
Yeah, exactly, and so, I, I think it puts the town in a, in a tough position.
Yeah.
I thought it was settled six months ago.
No, it wasn't.
No, it seemed like, you know, when the letter went out and everything else, cause it was a follow-up letter and denied and everything, so I thought it was settled.
No, it, it wasn't, but that's okay. Ed, yeah, I'm sorry.
A couple of years ago, they created a meter, a smart meter, that could tell how much water you used in the sewer, how much water you used in the lawn. They had it at the conference that went to down in Boston, but the meter was expensive.
Right.
So, I mean, for us to do something like that, it'd be crazy, you know, it wasn't worth it. But there is a meter out there that will do, that will sort that. It's cost prohibitive here.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Darryl, before we disband, can I get the finance committee to approve the minutes of the last two meetings so I can hand them off to Lydia?
Sure, I would entertain, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I sent these to.
That we, tell me the date, February twenty-eighth.
March sixth.
March sixth.
Motion made.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Ed?
Is the audit report available to the public?
Which. No, we, we haven't re, no, we.
Sixteen is on the town's website. Sixteen is on the town's website.
We got lots of audit reports.
The forensic audit? The forensic audit?
Oh, I don't.
Yeah, no, we haven't, that hasn't come to us yet from the auditor.
Darryl, what, seventeen?
No, the forensic audit, that John Sullivan did.
He received the draft copy, he'd like to meet with you.
That's, so, she's got the draft copy?
Few weeks.
I thought you said he was asking about that and he said we didn't have it, but I knew. Right, just waiting for a response.
Thank you, Phil, Ed, Jeff, Lydia, finance committee, Sharon, John.
Give you guys time to look at it.
So, before we adjourn, before the Board of Selectmen adjourn.
There were a lot of issues.
You need, you'd like this approved tonight, right?
Well, I forwarded that to town council for review and I did let them know that the board was meeting tonight and that if. I, I said to them, I know it's short notice, I have not received a response.
Do you want us to take this up at six twenty-five or something next Thursday, is that?
Sure. Would you please?
That'll be the only select board agenda, right?
Well, the other, other item that I am waiting to hear a response on is regarding the changing of the software program.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh.
I had talked about that.
So, oh, so you don't need this tonight, though, or do you?
I just wanna make sure there aren't gonna be any problems.
Right.
We change software programs.
Underst- is the software, you know, I, I did read it, but I'm blurry, is that in here as being an expense and part of what they're gonna do is changing the software, potentially changing, but going, going a new way? Okay.
But he is.
All right, let's, okay, so, so why don't we hold, since we're having a meeting next week with these guys, why don't we have a meeting at six fifteen, posted for six fifteen or something if possible? And during the week, we'll have an update as to the software change and by then, perhaps the town council will have viewed this and verify that there's no.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
That's not, that's not holding us up from, cause it wasn't gonna start till April first, right?
Right, right.
Which is a week and a half from now or two weeks.
We'll have a little bit of time then.
Easter, okay.
Yes, we do.
As long as it doesn't mess you up, Marlene. If we have a few questions and we have time to get them answered, then let's do that.
Sure. Were you going to continue with the, we didn't complete the topics, do you, whatever you wanna do, I mean, we can take them up next week.
Whatever these guys wanna do, we're here, nah.
But then that means we meet earlier.
How?
Well, we didn't have a discussion with the finance committee regarding the town meeting warrant, we can do that next week.
Sure. Yeah, I think, quite honestly, I think we did the, the heavy hitting tonight with the finance committee going through these line items and now it's just gonna be plug in a few numbers once we get some potential COLA increases or what have you.
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Is there, I know we got close to the end.
Time for Thursday changed or no? Are you changing the time for Thursday?
The only thing, you know, is I, I'd like to see the board making progress with reviewing the financial, financial policies.
You wanna meet at six?
Would you mind?
No, I, I don't mind, I'd rather meet at six and stay here another two minutes, to be perfectly honest with you,